Go ahead and call the meeting to order for April 2020, Board of Supervisors. We'll go ahead and start with a moment of silence, and I've been asked by Supervisor Scott, she has a moment and a dedication to start with.
Thank you Supervisor Simon. The dedication this morning, I'd like to dedicate this moment of silence to Oscar Dominguez, a beloved biology teacher at Clear Lake High School who passed away yesterday. He worked for Lake County Unified School District for eighteen years, and he will be dearly commemorated.
Okay.
All right. Dr. Pace, would you lead us in the pledge allegiance, please? Dr. Pace? Would you lead us in the pledge allegiance? Can't hear me? All right, can't hear me, I guess. So Supervisor Sabatier, go ahead and lead us in the pledge allegiance.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Getting some.
Okay, someone, yeah, if someone, someone on the line has something else going on, if you could mute, that would be great. Thank you very much. Okay, moving right along. Are there any, are there any extra items not appearing on the posted agenda today?
Johanna doesn't have any.
Mr. Chair, I would like to add an item. There is going to be a meeting on Friday, similar to the meeting that was last Thursday. Last Thursday was oriented towards businesses. This Friday will be oriented towards helping workers access the needed programs in order to continue their income. And I would like to add that as an extra item to be approved by the board so that it can be supported and sponsored by the board. And since this was not a meeting that was ready to go until after the posting of the agenda, this is why I would like to bring it today for the board to discuss and approve, because the meeting will also occur prior to the next agenda.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's been a request.
Yes, that was my motion.
Okay, so we have a request to add. I don't have anything in writing, Bruno, we'll just go directly off what you said. There's going to be another meeting that is happening on Friday that you would like to have board input on. So it has been seconded by Supervisor Scott to add that to agenda. Item number, we take it right up before consent agenda or after? Do you have a preference?
Whenever it works, I would suggest that we take it up, maybe after we're done with the coronavirus update, since it's kind of related to that.
Okay.
And Mr. Chair, boards records, I'll write up the extra for you.
Okay, thank you very much. And Carol, would you write that up? Will you email it to all of us or how? It's being added right now. Or you'll just read it once you write it up?
Yes, it might be easier to just read it and then it will be put in the board's records if you need to look at it later.
Okay. There's been a motion to second to add an extra item. Supervisor Sabatier, we'll go ahead and open it up to take a vote on this, Johanna, by roll call.
Yes. Okay Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Okay Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes. Okay. We'll go ahead and take that up like we said at the, after the COVID-19. So we'll go ahead and move right along into approval of consent agenda. Consent agenda items are usually non-controversial. Are there any items that need to be pulled by the board?
Yes Supervisor Simon, I wish to pull item 5.1, just wording change in the letter.
Okay.
And Supervisor Simon, I'd like to pull item 5.8, just to make sure that it's publicly discussed and make the public aware of what's potentially going to happen if approved.
So, okay, so I don't, the printer's not working, so I'm not sure which items those were, but I would like to have the item pulled that relates to code enforcement and the $500,000 worth of contracts.
That is 5.6 Supervisor Brown?
Thank you.
So we have item 5.1, 5.6, and 5.8 that would like to be pulled by the board. Johanna or Jake, do we have anything from the public? Would the public like to pull any items from this consent agenda? I haven't got any contact from anyone.
I don't, no one has opted in to raise their hand. I think if we move to unmute the floor, that would be a good motion.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to unmute people here. If you have a comment, please speak. Oops. I'm sorry, went the wrong way there. Okay, now the floor is unmuted.
All right, are there any items from the public that need to be pulled at this point? All right, here none. We'll go ahead and bring it back. For approval, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda with the items that have been pulled. So go ahead and bring back the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve items 5.1 through, or sorry, 5.2, 5.3, 5.4, 5.5, 5.7, and 5.9 through 512 from the consent agenda.
Oh, 512.
What was, I missed that. Who seconded?
Me, EJ.
All right, EJ, thank you. All right, there's a motion to approve the consent agenda items. We had three that were pulled, 5.1, 5.6, and 5.8. And we'll go ahead and bring it back for approval by roll call vote.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes. Okay, moving right along. Tina, would you like to, we'd like to take up the items that are pulled. We'll go ahead and start with, at this time, with item 5.1.
Yes, thank you. The only change I'd like to make is on the first bullet point, taking out, it says, "in all regarding with," just the word "with," leaving, maintaining engagement with Hope Rising and collaborate with Hope Rising Center for Transformation.
And Mr. Chair, in anticipation of those changes, the Assistant Clerk does have a version of the letter, those revisions, although the original letter that was posted to your agenda was slightly different. And the other issue that came up is signature for that letter. And originally, we had Supervisor Scott as the signer, because she's your board's designee to the Hope Rising Board. But if you wish, we also have a version of the letter where both Supervisor Scott and the Chair would sign. We could do it any way your board wishes.
I'm final signing the letter with Supervisor Scott if you want, or do you just want to sign the letter?
I would love to have you sign the letter with me.
Okay. Bruno, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I did bring that up to Carol Hutchinson's attention. I think that it's fine with Tina's signature on there, but with Moak Simon as our chair representing all of the board, I think it's important that we also show that there's solidarity on the board, as well as our representative to Hope Rising signing. So I appreciate that change, and also appreciate Supervisor Scott working with me on that slight change. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't overly promising on how we would move about with the Hope Rising project. I know that I am in full support of what they are doing. This is a project in the city of Clear Lake. The city of Clear Lake is in support of this, but I want to make sure that we do what we can and not put ourselves in a situation that we can't meet the expectations we sign on.
Okay, Supervisor Brown?
Yeah, that was, I was gonna ask that this be pulled off the agenda as well, just for that purpose. I didn't want to have any, any false hope that, you know, we're gonna be able to come up with any money or anything, until we have a chance to actually discuss it, you know, supporting them. I support them as well, but it has to be spelled out exactly what it is that we're supporting them on.
Okay. All right.
I did receive an email.
Go ahead, EJ.
Yeah, I did receive an email about it. I don't know if you all received the email as well, from Betsy Con.
Yes, I was gonna share that when you call for public comment, or Crandall can share now, whichever you prefer.
Okay, so Supervisor Crandall's giving me thumbs up, meaning I'll go ahead and go to, any more comments from the board at this point? Supervisor Sabatier?
I do want to say, just because we haven't really said much about it, I know we added it as a committee position, and Supervisor Scott has taken that on with Hope Rising. I think the work that they're doing is very valid and very needed in our community, and I appreciate Supervisor Scott's passion for this subject matter and wanting to help push this forward. I think it's important, and I think it's a good thing for all jurisdictions to sign on and say we support this.
Okay. All right, any more comments from the board? Okay, we'll go ahead and open this up to public comment. Carol and Jake?
Mr. Chair, I just received one piece of public comment, to the public comment email. So I'll read that one for you now. It comes to you from Betsy Con of Upper Lake. She says, "Dear Supervisors, what is a taxpaying citizen to make of this proposed commitment," the word "commitment" in quotes, "and then in parentheses, 'of our money,' to a nonexistent 'agency' fabricated by the imaginations of Adventist Hospital Clear Lake Administration, 'deaf' and productive of what exactly? The project described is, to all extents and purposes, 'a good thing,' in quotes, but since it will be funded by additional taxpayer dollars distributed to licensed medical practitioners, parentheses, who will be reimbursed by the system for their time, and there's a couple of dozen individuals, extremely expensive individuals, who theoretically will cost the medical service providers less if they can be transformed into, quote, 'healthy people,' why is the county of Lake making this so-called, quote, 'commitment,' question mark? And what exactly does that, quote, "commitment," since there is no publicly accountable entity to enter into a contract with Hope, with Hope Rising Lake County is still, after three years, lacking an IRS tax deductible status and Secretary of State registration as a California public benefit nonprofit corporation? And what budget unit will a future undefeated financial contribution come from? Does anyone know the project costs and operational maintenance of effort costs currently funded by solely, solely by Adventist Hospital Clear Lake's administration's, quote, "commitment" of retrofit dollars? Will the project serve only Adventist enrolled patients and only hire through Adventist Employment Department? There are many questions about Hope Rising Lake County itself that should be considered, but the lack of public transparency and institutional credibility do not discourage this taxpayer, excuse me, do not encourage this taxpayer to endorse the proposed letter of commitment and the nearly meaningless message it purports to send." So that, that's all the email comments, and Jake, if you can unmute the room and call for comments from the floor.
Carol, just, just real quick, Carol, who'd that email come from? Because I didn't catch that at the beginning.
Betsy Con of Upper Lake.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I will move to unmute the floor now. The floor is unmuted if you have a comment.
So I do have a question. Moak, if I could?
Jake, go ahead and mute the room again. I did not hear any comments. We just want to be.
Yeah, I didn't hear any comments. Go ahead and close it up, Jake. Bring back the board. Go ahead, Supervisor Brown.
So, you know, those are valid points to bring up, and I don't have an answer to that. I trust that, you know, everything is going like it's supposed to be going, but I don't know how we would do it, but at some point, hopefully, we'll be out of this nonsense, where we can actually have real meetings and people can show up and come and give a presentation. And I think, you know, our commitment today is non-financial. Is that the case? Okay.
Yes, so we're gonna support a project.
Yeah, I think the commitment that we have is that we support any, any effort that, you know, betters the community in terms of, you know, homeless using the hospitals and hospital not being able to take care of others. I mean, there's, there's a huge cost to this eventually anyway, so, so this was an effort. When, when this first started, I was invited to be on this committee, and because of conflicts in other, with other committees that I was on, I actually asked that they involve Supervisor Scott and bring her on, and it fit her well as far as timing and interest in that particular subject, so I think that worked out. But since then, I haven't really had a lot of hands-on with it, and so, you know, I don't, I'm not gonna discount what Betsy's asking, but I think there are answers to that that can be answered by someone other than us. And at some point, we should have that, especially before we do make any commitment financially, which I don't even see that happening. I don't know that there's anything coming up other than signing on for grants or anything like that. But, but for now, I think just implying our support, showing our support for a project as it moves forward, I think is fairly harmless and certainly doesn't cost the taxpayers anything at this point.
Yeah, I, if I could jump in just for, just, I attended some of these meetings too in the very beginning with the Adventist Health when I first came on the board. I think also Supervisor Smith invited me to one. It was very, it was the very beginning, and understanding what they were attempting to do moving forward. I do know this is a positive thing for our community, and I believe moving forward with the support letter today would be a good idea. And ultimately, Rob, I agree. Once we're able to have presentations and stuff as it come back, I think people will be excited about the opportunity of supporting this, just like the other municipalities in the county. So that's all I have to say. Supervisor Scott?
We were, as a group of Hope Rising, we're planning on coming to the board and giving a presentation on everything that, all the great work that's being done. So that will be coming as soon as we are out of this. Just to confirm that this is a collaborative effort in the community. It's not just an Adventist Health project. This, the center will help everybody needing assistance living here in Lake County. Just wanted to refer that.
Supervisor Sabatier?
And I know it's a different group as far as the entity, but a lot of the same players are in this group. And when you look at the success of Project Restoration House over in Lower Lake, and the fact that they're trying to do some similar activities at the Hope Center, I have high hopes that, once things get started, that the things will end up in the same success rate as what Project Restoration House has been showing. And Supervisor Scott, I would suggest that you request that letter. If you did not receive it, I didn't receive it. So that maybe the Hope Rising, when they do their presentation, can answer some of those community questions that we've already received.
I will do that. Thank you.
Okay, all right, good discussion. Go ahead, Bruno.
No, I stepped on toes.
Okay, well, you know, I would, we'll go ahead and bring back the board for action here.
I'd like to approve letter of support for Hope Rising Center for Transformation authorized Supervisor Scott and Supervisor Simon on behalf of the board to sign with the different changes that I said earlier.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Motion in the second. Johanna, go ahead with roll call.
Okay Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, moving right along with the next consent agenda item that was pulled by Supervisor Brown. Item 5.6, approve public nuisance abatement contracts for the following service vendors. A JDM Earthworks for an amount not to exceed 150,000, B Cook Construction Engineering Partnership, not to exceed 100, yeah, partnership not to exceed 150,000, Leonard's Hauling Services for a amount not to exceed 200,000 for a term from March 17, 2020, to June 30, 2022, and authorize the chair to sign. So go ahead Supervisor Brown, address this item which pulled.
So, so there wasn't a lot of backup on this to identify exactly what projects it was for, so I had some questions about it, and I, I actually, I'm not sure if Scott's on right now. Okay, yeah, he, he was. We could probably, oh yeah, he's on. There he is. So anyway, Scott took a lot of time yesterday and answered all of my questions. Basically, I was just asking, you know, what the project entailed, how it was gonna look when it rolled out, you know, $500,000. And, you know, he explained everything to me, and if he wants to, you know, talk about the project, I'm good with it at this point, but I thought it was a good idea to bring it up before the board and let the public understand exactly what the project looks like.
Okay, any more questions? Any other board members' questions at this point? All right, if not, go ahead. Scott, if you'd like to.
Sure.
Walk through the project, that'd be great.
You bet. So I'm gonna minimize you just a little bit, because I have a lot of information here that I'm trying to summarize. The board set aside $500,000 for code enforcement over the next two years for abatement of properties. And what CDD did is, through the help of Susan down in admin, is they put a request for qualifications out, and they had four contractors respond to the RFQ. Three of them were considered responsive. The fourth did not fill out paperwork properly, left a lot of things unanswered, and so they were declared non-responsive. These three contractors, the dollar amounts that were kind of assigned to them was based on past record of performance, and it's a basis really for establishment of the contract. What we've done is we've, in effect, pre-qualified these contractors, and when a project comes up, we'll, we'll look at the three contractors that we have the ability or the contract with, and if, what we'll do is we'll ask them for proposals for that particular project, and we'll issue them a purchase order for, for that particular item of work. What we've done is we've streamlined, in effect, the process by having these contractors pre-qualified, by having them, having insurance in place. We'll, we'll still go through a abbreviated bidding process in that they'll go to the property, and we'll explain what the scope of work is, and they'll give us a proposal. But the insurance and all of those types of things will already be in place, and we'll be able to get things done a little bit quicker. And we will have met our procurement requirements in that we've put this out for, for proposals, and we have these pre-qualified contractors. We're hoping that, again, it'll streamline things, make things a little bit more efficient. We've got three contractors who are licensed, bonded, have all the insurance. Some of, you know, if we run into a situation where there's specialized work required, hazard material type work, we'll be able to, to assign that to particular contractors if necessary. Otherwise, they'll, they'll have an opportunity to bid on, on each of the properties that we're going to abate. It's a two-year contract. The dollar amounts are, those are total not-to-exceed amounts. I suppose if we have a contractor that's doing very well with their bidding and doing work very well, you know, we won't be able to exceed the dollar amount that's been assigned to their contract. We need to come back to your board. Anything over 25,000, we need to come to your board for approval. But anything below 25,000, we'll be able to do with a purchase order and, and again, with pre-qualified contractors. So two-year effort. Hopefully, it's successful, and we'll, we'll see, we'll see how it goes, and hopefully, I've answered your questions.
Thank you very much Supervisor Scott. You know, as always, I want to thank you. I think that's a great idea. It's one of the board's objectives, obviously, to work through diligently on these abatement projects, and appreciate you thinking outside of the box. I haven't seen anything like this since I've been on the board, so thank you very much.
Well, and I appreciate that. However, I've inherited this. Your, your comments are gonna be better directed to the previous staff, and certainly Andrew Williams, our Code Enforcement Division leader, and certainly give a shout out to Susan down in admin for her assistance in the development of the RFQ. But I do appreciate your comments, and we'll make sure that those are passed along.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for clarifying that. Thanks to everybody who worked on it. So thank you very much, Scott. Bruno, go ahead.
I just wanted to, for clarification purposes, and I know the answer. I'm just gonna ask Director De Leon to answer it for me. This is for abaintments of properties. This has nothing to do with the benefit zone and the funding that's been received through the property tax. This is separate.
Yes, it is separate funding. It is, has nothing to do with the zone's benefit.
Yeah, just because the amounts were close, I just wanted to make sure the public was aware.
Yeah, I actually asked that same thing yesterday, because the amounts were close and the timing of that last discussion.
Right.
Really clear that's not.
Any other board members with comments or questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much, Scott. We'll go ahead and open this up to public comment. Carol, do we have any public comment on this item?
There's been no public comment received by email on this item, Mr. Chair, and so I would ask Jake to unmute the room so we can call for comment from the room.
Okay. The floor is unmuted. Do you have a comment?
Is there any comment on this item, item 5.8 from the room? And if you could remember to pick your.
No, I didn't put Carol.
Oh yeah, unmuted, I apologize. Hello?
I think that's background noise.
Okay, hearing none. We'll go ahead and bring it back to the board for action. You get?
I'll move to the public nuisance abatement contract for the following services vendors. A, JDM Earthworks for an amount not to exceed $150,000. B, Cook Construction Engineering Partnership for an amount not to exceed $150,000. And C, Leonard's Hauling Services for an amount not to exceed $200,000 in return.
Excuse me?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, these are each independent contracts, and since.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. These are each independent contracts and since you've taken them off consent, they now each have to be approved individually.
Okay, you gotta do them individually, Eddie.
Okay. So of the fact and start, I motion to approve public nuisance abatement contracts for JDM Earthworks for an amount not to exceed $150,000.
Second.
All right, motion in the second. Go ahead, Johanna.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Hi.
Supervisor Crandall.
Hi.
Supervisor Scott.
Hi.
Supervisor Brown.
Yep.
And Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed.
All right. I'll motion to approve public nuisance abatement contract for Cook Construction Engineering Partnership for an amount not to exceed $150,000.
Second.
Go ahead, Johanna.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Hi.
Supervisor Crandall.
Hi.
Supervisor Scott.
Hi.
Supervisor Brown.
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll motion to approve public nuisance abatement contract for Leonard's Hauling Services for an amount not to exceed $200,000 and for a term from March 17, 2020 to June 30, 2022 and authorize your sign.
Second.
Motion in the second. Go ahead, Johanna.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Hi.
Supervisor Crandall.
Hi.
Supervisor Brown. Oh wait, Supervisor, okay Supervisor Scott.
Hi.
And then Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Just like to thank the board. We appreciate that very much and appreciate the questions and we'll get back to work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Scott De Leon. Okay, moving right along, we have our last item that was pulled from the agenda. Item 5.8, authorize the closure of East Lake landfill until the County of Lake officer rescinds COVID-19 shelter in place order. And I definitely know that is not. Go ahead Supervisor Sabatier.
So number one, I wanted to make sure this was discussed in public since if approved, this would create a change of access to our landfill. And number two, I just want to clarify because the header scared a lot of people thinking it was a complete closure rather than a closure of a single day. If you read the memo, you would definitely see the details were there as far as saying only Sundays. So right now, what we would be looking at is Sunday closures. Other than that, Monday through Saturday would still be open from 7:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. They are taking in some recycling due to the closure of the recycling center a little further down the hill. That's creating a little bit more work for them, which is why why it's being asked to shut down on Sundays. So I just wanted to make that clear. And I believe I saw that Director Ewing was here earlier. He may have something to add to that.
Okay. Any more questions from the board? If not, we'll go ahead and turn it over to Lars. Lars, would you?
Okay, looks like I was just unmuted. This is Lars Ewing. Okay, I apologize for that. Supervisor Sabatier summarized it very well. I can go into any level of detail that might be necessary, but in general, three general categories that are driving the need for this. The workforce shortages, operational increases as a result of the concern for COVID contamination. And then lastly, and I would say probably on a much more minor basis than the first two, but the last one is a decrease in the amount of both vehicle traffic and material actually in balance with landfill on Sundays in comparison to the same timeframe from one year ago. It is something, Sunday closures is something that has been on the table, at least internally, discussion, both within staff and at the Solid Waste Task Force, but it's never actually come to fruition. So we're, in a sense, maybe using this as an opportunity to see how it works. But the plan and the intent is not to make this a long-term closure.
Thank you very much for that information, Lars. Any more questions from the board at this time? Okay, Carol, is there any public comment on this item?
I have not received public comment through the public comment email. Jake, can you unmute the room?
Yes. The floor is unmuted. Do you have a comment?
While we're unmuted, it might be helpful to also have all participants keep their own personal mute buttons on because when we're unmuting, we're getting a lot of background noise. So I would encourage everybody to have your own mute button on and then unmute yourself when you want to speak.
So that actually unmutes people. So that opens up everybody. That's why we're getting that. So I'm just listening for any sort of action from them and then I'll clean them up relatively soon.
Okay, there is. So hearing none, it's been open for a minute here. We'll go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the, I move to authorize the closure of the East Lake sanitary landfill on Sundays until the County of Lake health officer rescinds the COVID-19 shelter in place order.
Second.
All right, Johanna, go ahead with the roll call.
Okay Supervisor Sabatier.
Hi.
Supervisor Crandall.
Hi.
Supervisor Scott.
Hi.
Supervisor Brown.
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon.
Yes. Okay, I take care of working. Go ahead, Carol.
Mr. Chair, before you move on, can we do a quick audio check with our county council? I just want to make sure she can be heard when the board needs her. So go ahead, Anita. Mute and speak, Anita.
Hello?
Hello, yeah.
We're receiving Anita. Thank you.
Okay, great. Took me a minute. I had to hit a lot of buttons. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Bruno.
I'm wondering, I kind of feel bad for Dr. Pace hanging out so long, going over the consent agenda, wondering if we can do 6.3 before 6.2?
Yeah, you know what? We still have item 6.1. Do we have any public input at this time?
Mr. Chair, I have not received any general public input. All the comments there relate to specific agenda items.
And yes, we are behind here. So we'll go ahead and take up item 6.3.
Mr. Chair, just one second. We should probably open the floor to make sure nobody on the floor wanted to make a like input comment.
Oh, okay. Jake, can you open the floor and see if there's any public input at this time?
Yes, I will unmute the floor. All right, everyone is muted. If you have a comment.
Looks like we're good, Mr. Chair.
All right, go ahead and bring it back to the board here. We're going to go ahead and move on to item 6.3. Our, well, do we have anybody online? Last week, when we did our proclamation, we had someone online. And I don't know the players on the maybe here for the sexual assault proclamation or the national, and I know that the sheriff is here for the, or at least the sheriff's department could be for this. Okay. We'll go ahead and move on to items.
I'm sorry, I'm here for the sexual assault proclamation. It took me a minute to unmute everything.
Okay. All right. I know I lost something here. There we go. All right. Let's go ahead and do the proclamations at this point. I know we're running behind a little bit. Board, you know, that was something we had to get done. So let's just go ahead and read through the proclamations. Let's go to our 6.2 item, our 9:06 a.m. items. Presentation of a proclamation designating the month of April 2020 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Lake County. And B Presentation of a proclamation designating the week of April 12th through the 18th, 2020 as National Public Safety Dispatcher Week.
Can I?
And so we'll go ahead and start with the presentation of the proclamation designating the month of April 2020 with Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And as we're going to move forward with these, I think the way we did it last month, last week was, Carol, you read that for us?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I can do that. Just a moment. Okay, we're starting with the sexual assault awareness proclamation. We are designating the month of April 2020 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Lake County. Whereas in 2019, Lake County agencies responded to the needs of at least 427 sexual assault victims and their significant others and their family members. And whereas no one, no one person, organization, agency, or community can eliminate sexual assault on their own and the pursuit between public and private Lake County agencies is invaluable. And whereas child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that one in six boys and one in four girls will experience a sexual assault before the age of 18. And whereas Lake County Family Resource Center has been instrumental in leading the way in the County of Lake in addressing sexual assault by providing 24-hour hotline service and continuing support, advocacy, and accompaniment to victims, survivors, and their significant others. And whereas ending sexual assault in Lake County must include active public and private efforts to speak out against sexual violence. And it is time for all of us to start the conversations, take appropriate action, and support one another to create a safer environment for all residents. And whereas staff and volunteers of the Lake Family Resource Center Rape Crisis Center work year round to encourage every person to speak out against sexual violence and to support survivors by providing prevention education and survivor empowerment information. And whereas the Lake Family Resource Center and the District Attorney's Office, Victim Witness Division, local law enforcement agencies, hospitals, and schools have set an important example of how forging collaborative relationships improves the quality of services for those impacted by sexual violence. And now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby designate the month of April 2020 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Lake County, April 7th as the Sexual Assault Awareness Day of Action in Lake County, and urges all local governments, schools, businesses, and community members to participate in the sponsored events this month to increase awareness and public support for creating communities free from violence exploitation.
I can't hear anybody.
You're muted, Monk.
Oh.
Hello?
There you are.
All right, thank you. I know that we have someone here to accept this virtually and we'll go ahead turn it over to. I couldn't see the name. Thank you, Jake.
That's okay.
All right.
Pilot, I work for Lake Family Resource Center with the Rape Crisis Center. And I just wanted to thank the Board of Supervisors for proclaiming Sexual Assault Awareness Month. This is a lot different than what we normally do. We just live in a different world right now. Some of the, and I just want to hit on some of the things that we're doing. We're actually doing 30 Days of SAM on our Facebook page. If everybody wanted to go ahead and look, there's different educational pieces, maybe some about human trafficking, sexual assault, maybe how to educate your children, some different children's activities that you can do on there. So that's what we're going to be doing for the month of April this year. But thank you very much for proclaiming Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
And thank you, Gina. Thank you for joining us and thank you for all the hard work that you guys do. Tech, young folks, everybody in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. You guys have a good day.
Hold on.
You too. Go ahead, Bruno.
Yeah, I have a question. Thank you. Gina, I know that we spoke about this. Supervisor Brown brought it up the other day. I know there's articles about increased sexual assaults happening on national newspapers. We were told by our sheriff that currently we're not seeing an increase in numbers here. Is your rape crisis still open and available even through this COVID-19 situation for those that may be going through those types of assaults and attacks still at this moment in time?
We are. We are a 24-hour crisis line. I don't, if you'd like me to say the number.
Please.
It's 888-485-7733. And we're still responding to all sexual assaults.
I appreciate that. I think it's important for that to continue, especially as people might feel more trapped with the person that may be assaulting them.
Yes, we were expecting a rise in numbers but have not received that yet. You know, fingers crossed it doesn't happen, but we are here to respond if needed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Bruno, I think for, just for a clarification, I think that the sheriff knows they were talking about domestic violence occurrences.
Yeah.
You're right. You're right.
Yes. Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Have a good day.
Good day, Gina. Okay, we'll move on to the second proclamation.
Yes, Mr. Chair, our sheriff is in the meeting with us, Brian Martin, and he will read this one for your board.
Excellent. Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning. Thank you. Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California proclamation designating the week of April 12th through the 18th, 2020 as National Public Safety Dispatchers Week. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require law enforcement, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas an emergency, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of law enforcement officers, firefighters, and emergency medical professionals is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our law enforcement officers and fire personnel is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Lake County Central Dispatch Center. And whereas public safety dispatchers are the first and can be the most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services and are the vital link for our law enforcement officers and fire personnel by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them with information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas the public safety dispatchers of the Lake County Sheriff's Office have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients exhibiting compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Lake County Board of Supervisors does hereby designate the week of April 12th through the 18th, 2020 as National Public Safety Dispatchers Week in Lake County and encourages all citizens to join in recognizing the commitment of public safety dispatchers in our communities to preserve the safety of us all. Adopted this 14th day of April 2020, signed by the Chair of Board of Supervisors. And I would like to add a little bit that our dispatchers in Lake County, all over this country, serve our communities 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They, like many of us, miss important holidays, family events. They were ruling shifts, all to make sure that we're able to provide law enforcement, fire, and medical services around the clock. Becoming a dispatcher is not something everyone can do. Selection process is tough, the training is challenging, and the career itself can take its toll, both physically, emotionally, and mentally. Dispatchers hear things and the relay messages are often tragic, sometimes humorous, but they're frequently matters of life and death. Without them coordinating our responses and providing up-to-date information, we, and by we, I mean deputy sheriffs, police officers, firefighters, paramedics, many others, we just wouldn't be able to deliver services in a safe and effective manner. So if you're a dispatcher, thank you. If you know a dispatcher, thank them. Thank them every time you see them, but especially during these important and difficult times. And lastly, I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for taking this opportunity to recognize their hard work.
Thank you for reading that proclamation. And absolutely, dispatchers this week, especially in this crisis across the country and here locally, want to thank them very much. So Brian, thanks for reading that today.
Monk, I just wanted to make a quick comment.
Go ahead, Supervisor Sabatier.
And I want to add on to what the sheriff was saying. When I read through this, when I received our packet last Friday, I was reminded of a very unfortunate and scary situation that occurred in Clear Lake Oaks with one of our deputies being left in the dark, hurt, and dealing with what he was dealing with out there all alone. All he had was that voice. And I really appreciate the fact that our dispatchers are there to support. And I really appreciate the fact that our dispatchers are there to support our deputies in uniform and making sure that they are given the right information, that they are being supported emotionally when dealing with very harrowing experiences. And that was one of those moments where I know I contacted our sheriff and said that this is why we should be thankful for our dispatchers. And so, thank you for their hard work, and that's just one example of what they deal with and what they do for us every single day, so I do appreciate them.
Thank you, supervisor, just about to you.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff. Okay, moving along, item 6.3, our 9:10 a.m. item, our consideration of update on COVID-19. And I know Dr. Gary Pace has been waiting patiently, thank you very much, we'll go ahead and turn the floor over to Dr. Gary Pace, Public Health Officer, Lake County.
Morning, everybody, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good morning, Mr. Chair and then Supervisors, Gary Pace, Public Health Officer of the County of Lake, and this is the weekly coronavirus update, so thank you for this opportunity to speak with you all and to speak with the public. Today, what I'd like to do is talk a little bit about the situation that we find ourselves in now. So, the numbers are flattening out in the country and also in the Bay Area. And the numbers today, let's see, are, uh, so in California, there's 22,000 confirmed cases with 680 deaths now. And in Sonoma County, they're reporting 150 total cases, and in Lake County now, we have five cases. So, what's, what we've been seeing now is that about a month ago was when things really started moving forward, and the, in New York, that's when they really started, started getting a lot of pressure on the hospitals and the emergency departments with a lot of sick people. Down in the Bay Area, it was beginning, but it was also right about then that the, we started to put the shelter-in-place orders in place in the Bay Area up here, and then California came in a few days later. And so, really, it's been about four weeks now that we've been in this sort of really decreased mobility situation. So, the curve that was starting to go up very quickly and was starting to look a lot like it was going to be in New York, actually began to flatten out, and now has been quite flat for a week or so. And so, we have not seen the, the real drastic increase in very sick people and in deaths that were happening out there. So, while in this, a month ago, we were really in this mode of preparing for, you know, a lot of surge on the hospitals and really starting to prepare for when things could get very, very intense like they had been at New York, that, that has not materialized at this point. So, we're getting to the situation where we're starting to have a different discussion, which is the discussion about how do we move forward from here without loosening up the restrictions in a way that causes a surge, like a secondary surge, but also we, you know, the economic impact and the, the stress on the community is tremendous. And so, we want to try to walk this balancing act between starting to think about how to loosen things up and also being able to react if, if more sick people start coming and it starts to look like we might overwhelm the system. So, you know, just throughout the conversation today, I think that's going to be this discussion on how, how to thread the needle. And there's a lot of discussion on the national front, as I'm sure everybody's aware, also at the state level about this. The governor is going to have a discussion, a public discussion at noon today about this. I'm not sure exactly what he's going to say, but I think he's going to start rolling out some of his thoughts about how this would, how this might look in the state. So, in Lake County, our current order, shelter-in-place orders go through May 3rd, which is three weeks from yesterday. I believe the state ones go another week after that, but it's somewhere in the same range, and the Sonoma Counties is also May 3rd. So, we're, we're trying to be aware of working with our neighbors and also with the state as a whole, because it all kind of has to fit together. If we start changing things drastically up here, but they aren't changing down in the Bay Area, then we know, you know, people will be coming up here, and then we get into a whole another problematic situation. So, these are just some of the thoughts, and I'll talk about them a little bit more after I just kind of finish the update of what we've been doing in the county. So far, so we have five cases, there have been, not been, the last new case was, we got the results back Saturday, so, and all of these cases had gotten the contact either from outside the county, or one of them was a family member within the, within the case that got there. So, as far as we've been able to determine at this point, there's no community transmission, which is one of the big things we look for, that it's out in the community and that, that it's spreading in that way. It's, it's very possible it's out there, but we again are still not seeing the, the increase in cases at the hospitals and the clinics that we would expect if that was happening, and we haven't been able to pick it up with any tests. Testing is still a big challenge, we're really working hard to try to get more sampling capabilities. We've done just about 300 tests now in the county, and the only ones that have tested positive within the county are the ones that have been through the health department kind of trying to test people that we're concerned about for some reason or another. The normal testing strategies of the sick people in the hospital that's been done have not, have all been negative at this point. The one other thing, just in this kind of introductory part to talk about, is that in the Bay Area, the one place that's been hit really hard is the nursing homes. And there's been several nursing homes that have been, had outbreaks in them, and so the infection can spread very quickly, and those folks are very vulnerable. So, they've been having troubles with outbreaks in several of the nursing homes, and some of the staff end up not wanting to come into work, and they're having problems keeping the places staffed. And so, we've been talking with the nursing facilities in the community, they've been very cooperative, and they're all taking the proper steps to try to prevent anything bad from happening there, but you know, it is, it is an area of concern. The hospitals are both at low levels of occupancy now because of the steps they've taken, they've been very, very forward-thinking in their preparations as have the clinics in the area. So, you know, the medical community has been very responsive, and even though, you know, financially, they're all taking huge hits from this, this response to the concerns about COVID, they are doing all the right things that, that we could hope for. So, I think, you know, in thinking about this and kind of moving into it, the, one of the things to emphasize is that this decrease in mobility has been extremely successful in preventing severe illness and death. And, you know, I think to compare New York City with San Francisco is one way to get an understanding of that, you know, the number of deaths and the overwhelming of the system in New York City compared to the really kind of ability to respond in a good way down in San Francisco has been pretty dramatic, and that's because of this, this decrease in social mobility, the shelter-in-place orders. Lake County, of course, is different from New York, is different from San Francisco, but we're right on the edge of where the infection was really starting the mushroom. And, but it got flattened down in the Bay Area, and I think the actions that the community has been so good about taking has really stopped, stopped the entry and slowed the spread. So, the second thing to emphasize is that we're going to continue with the steps we've taken all along, and I'll kind of go over quickly what we have done so far, just so that people are aware. And then I think the third step of this, though, is then we have to start looking ahead to how to continue protecting the community while starting to figure out how to loosen these things up in a way that will allow the economy and the social life of people to start getting a little bit back to normal without putting undue risk out there. So, I'll talk a little bit about some of the ideas and what we're thinking about with that. So, in terms of the response that we're doing so far, the decrease in mobility continues, we're, we are, the enforcement is going along, we've, the essential businesses are still allowed to be open, the non-essential businesses are not, people are still in a shelter-in-place situation unless they have to go out for certain things. Where I sent out a recommendation a couple days ago that people should wear masks when they're out of their house, when they're out in public, it's not an order. Sonoma County just put an order in place that's going to go into effect in a couple days, that everybody, when they're basically out in public, needs to wear a face covering. We're not going to that point, at this point, and may, maybe we'll see the need to later, but we are really requiring healthcare workers to wear face coverings when they're at work and in the nursing facilities, all those folks have already started doing that without any problem or any real pressure on my part. The FDA has come out with a pretty strong recommendation that workers in grocery stores and pharmacies need to be wearing masks, facial coverings, because these cloth masks that people can wear prevent the transmission of infection if they're in a point where they've got an early infection before they recognize they have symptoms and they're in that, that phase where they could be spread, be shedding the virus. So, it's really to protect the other people, so the store worker who wears the mask is protecting all the people that they come in contact with in case they would get infected. This is one of the steps that we'll want to put into place as we start thinking about loosening up some of the restrictions, having masking and, and ways to really ensure the social distancing is going to be even more important, because as people, you know, the, basically the social distancing thing that we're doing now and everybody being sheltered in place is kind of a big wet blanket on everything. As we start pulling that back, we're going to want to be able to be more selective and have people kind of do some of this stuff on their own. The, the isolation, so and contact tracing, so when we do do some testing, which we are continuing to do, and we're actively trying to get more supplies, the state is making a lot of promises about what, about getting more supplies, and we're, we haven't seen that yet, we're trying to engage with them in conversations about that, and we're, we're working as hard as we can on that. But like I say, we've done about 300 of them now, and if somebody does need testing, they need to contact their provider, we do have a small capacity to get out and to help some of the providers get some testing done if they need it. So, if a person out there is listening and they feel like they need testing, they're concerned that they haven't been able to get it, they should contact their provider, or they can contact us if that, if they're not having luck through their provider. But the best way to do this is through the providers and through the hospitals, we just haven't had a lot of problems with supplies. The, when we do pick up somebody that is positive, then the public health nurses really jump into action, and they've been extremely busy working on setting up protocols to do what's called contact tracing, where we, they test everybody that the person has been in contact with, or they contact everybody that the person has been in contact with and test the ones that need to be tested. And they also help the, the person stay at home and isolate from any of the well people so that it's not being spread. That's been going well so far, the five cases are all mildly symptomatic, or their, their symptoms have resolved, and they've all been very cooperative with the, with the protocols that we've been working with. And so, it doesn't seem like they're spreading it anyplace else, or that they've had a lot of contact outside that the spread has occurred, but we are monitoring all that. We have been working on some capabilities to do some housing for people if they don't have a good situation at home to isolate. For example, if they have some elderly people in the home and they, they don't have a lot of room to be able to isolate, or there's nobody that can really take care of them. We do have some hotel rooms now that we can put people in, and we have some volunteers that are helping support with this. So, if, for example, you know, somebody has an elderly mother at home and they share a room or something and there's no way around it, we could have that person stay in the hotel while they're infectious so that that would protect the vulnerable mother from getting sick. If that situation comes up and somebody doesn't know how to, how to, how to navigate that, they just need to contact us at the health department. The, the hospitals, like I say, have been doing very well and seem to be quite prepared, and so I, I think we can be confident about that. The, there's a couple things with some of the vulnerable populations that we're particularly concerned about, one is the homeless population, and Pastor Shannon has been working with a group with that, it's called Project Room Key, where there's work going in with some state money to try to set up some housing situations for some of the folks that are particularly vulnerable that don't have homes, so they can't really shelter in place, because if they have certain underlying conditions or if they're elders and they're out in a camp out there and somebody else gets sick, they don't really have a way to separate. So, we're trying to get them into some structured living situations before they get exposed, so, to protect them. And Pastor Shannon and a team have been working very hard on that, Crystal with Social Services, and so they're making progress with that. And Pastor Shannon's also been working with the Warming Center, now that's open 24 hours, seven days a week, and through the end of April at least. And the seniors are another community that we've been very kind of worried about, just in terms of their vulnerabilities, and we've been in contact with the different senior centers and the different senior facilities, and they're taking proper precautions, and they are still continuing to feed people primarily through deliveries or people coming to pick it up and going out. We've really discouraged the group congregate dining because those, that's the place where it could really spread. I've also really feel like if the seniors can, they, it's much better for them just to stay home and have somebody else do their shopping form or do other errands, because it's just better for them not to be out in the community. So, the last part of this would be just talking a little bit about the endpoint, what we're thinking about that, how, how to think about it. And I think, you know, the idea is, is it's, we're trying to balance this huge financial and social and educational impact that's happened to the community against the health risks. And so, to try to loosen up a little bit of the restrictions so that the economic life can get going again without doing an undue risk to the, to the health of the community is really the, the balancing act here. And so, part of what we want to do is think about how to do that without having a huge second surge of cases. Pretty clearly, when they look at some of the historical record of these things, when you pull back the restrictions too fast, there's a secondary surge that comes, comes afterwards, and then all the work that's been done up to then is actually, didn't help that much. And so, what we're thinking about is trying to selectively pull things back a little bit and then see how the response is, and if there is an uptick in, in cases, but we're able to manage it, they can, this doesn't overwhelm the hospital system, and we're able to kind of protect the vulnerable people in the community, then that's a good thing. So, it's not necessarily to prevent the spread of the infection altogether, but it's to sort of control and, and kind of be able to contain it. So, that's why the contact tracing and the, the home isolation is so important, because when it does start coming into the community, we can kind of put a rope around it and help the seniors over in the, in the nursing facilities or the folks that are home alone, we can kind of protect them. So, one of the things that, one of the questions that comes up a lot is around kids, and, and how do you start bringing them into this, because they don't seem to get as sick, we're not sure what the long-term effects of a COVID infection is on children, but on the short term, most of them don't seem to get that, that sick. So, can we start backing off with the kids a little bit and maybe think about summer camps this summer, or some of those kind of things where they can get some education and, and do some activities if they're in kind of small, consistent groups and things like that? So, I mean, I think these are all the discussions we have to do, we have to kind of look at the activities that have the highest social benefit and the lowest health risk, those ones will probably bring onto the table first, and the ones that have the lowest social benefit and the highest health risk will be later, and those ones will be large group activities, concerts, you know, large music festivals, big religious gatherings, those kind of things are just going to have to be further down the road because of the, because of the big risk of getting a big group of people together. The, we have to be able to coordinate with the state and with the other neighboring counties. Like I said, the governor has this discussion at noon, so we'll see what he's rolling out. I don't, they haven't really tipped their hand yet, but there's been discussions about this stuff, and I think he's going to do, talk about some of that today. The, we have to be able to prevent surges, or if we do start seeing a surge, to then we may have to pull the reins... we may have to pull the reins back in and clamp back down again. We see that this works. We are, we now know for sure that this whole thing can work and can slow the spread. It's a lag time, you know, there's a seven to 14 day lag time, but if we back things off and then all of a sudden it starts looking very sketchy, we may have to go back in and, and clamp back down again. So I, I think, you know, one of the things we probably want to do, what I would suggest to the board is that we formulate some kind of working group within the county that we sit and start talking about this. You know, we have about three weeks till this order comes out. I think we're going to know a lot more as this three weeks goes on. We'll be able to see how the other counties do and what the governor's got in mind and what the president's, what his plan ends up being. But, you know, Lake County is unique. We're, we're isolated, but we're close to the Bay Area. And one of the things for sure is as we start opening up the lake, folks are going to be coming up here as much as possible. So how can we sort of manage that? What's a reasonable way to manage it? What's a reasonable way to open pieces of the lake up to the local folks while trying to protect somewhat from this influx of folks coming from the Bay Area? So, you know, it's just a lot, nobody knows how to do this. This is new territory for all of us and, but we have a lot of good, good-hearted, good-minded folks in the leadership here. And so I would suggest that we get some kind of county work group with some of the people that would be involved to represent economics and the sheriff and schools and public health and all that together to start sort of thinking about that. So I think that's probably all I wanted to cover this morning and then, you know, happy to talk about as much as you want and thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pace. We'll go ahead and bring it back to the board for coming. I would just like to say, you know, I, I agree with a, a working group or ad hoc committee, however, we're going to do that. And obviously I would definitely would be interested on being on that as the board chair and then figuring out what the other component or whatever supervisor would like to be on there. But I definitely, you know, appreciate the information today. I did have just a question on the Sonoma County's order that came out yesterday on the masks, wearing masks for everybody. And right now, is there a regional call that is happening with the public health officers where you guys are discussing what's happening here with the, the counties around us?
We have multiple calls, yeah. So there's a Bay Area group, there's a Northern California group that are the smaller counties up north and so, and then we have a statewide thing as well. So there's a lot of different discussions about that. But, you know, each county is, I mean, part of the, kind of the beauty and part of the chaos of this is that each county is kind of working a little bit independently as well. And so, yeah.
Okay, alright. Okay, go ahead, board. I know we got too much, Bruno, go ahead, supervisor's about to.
So I had a, a list of things here that I wanted to ask. It's not super long, but just about five or six things. You mentioned Dr. Pace, that the FDA was it, is asking for grocery stores to make sure that they wear masks. I know from our earlier conversations that the EOC, I believe it was through Dean that works with public health, was trying to figure out the logistics for hospitals and pharmacies and other things like that to make sure they had their mask. Is that something we can implement grocery stores with where they are being supported by our public health and EOC? Because that, that's the number one place where almost everybody is going is a grocery store. And with the reduced access to masks, whether it's cloth masks or other masks, it's still taking time for them to get that. Is there anything that the EOC can do to help provide some support?
That's a great question. I'm glad you brought that up because it's worth emphasizing this. What we're recommending for the public and for the, these kind of workforce folks that are non-healthcare people is cloth face covering. So these are the ones, you know, I mean, it's sort of a strange thing that here we are in the richest country in the world and we don't have the masks for everybody to do this and we're really asking for volunteers to make these things and put them together. But that's really where we're at is because the, the surgical masks are hard to get, the N95 masks are hard to get. We are starting to get some of those through, but we're, the recommendations are really to, for those to be within healthcare facilities where they're in particular circumstances. So even at the nursing facilities, those folks should be wearing the cloth face coverings and the grocery stores cloth face coverings. When I go out in public now, cloth face covering. So, and it's really, there are, you can wear a bandana, you can do very simple things. There's a lot of information online. You can go on our website, the Lake County Health Department website that has some information about that. But it's, it's really recommended not to use the N95 or the surgical mask because we're, we're concerned about supply and, you know, they're having to recycle those and a lot of the places around the country where there's a lot of cases. So, yeah, I'm glad you brought that up.
Going back to my question, even for the cloth masks, and I agree that we don't want to have grocery store clerks wearing N95, that's not the necessary equipment that they need to have. But is it possible for the EOC or public health to support in providing cloth masks? If, if they're being requested by government to have those, is it possible for us to help until the gap between ordering and receiving where we might be able to provide some interim support?
Well, what that would require would be coordinating a volunteer force out in the community to make those for the different people that need it. And so, yeah, I don't know. I mean, you know, it's basically kind of the way public health is sort of set up is where we, our primary focus is really trying to support the healthcare partners and give kind of guidance in the community. I think really what's needed for that situation is for people to contact family and friends who know how to sew and, or know how to do these things and get online and do it. I suppose, you know, we can talk about that at the EOC, if that's something that you, you would recommend that we discuss.
Okay. My second question is related to vacation homes in Lake County. I know I've discussed this with you, Dr. Pace and Director Pomeroy from Public Health. And I know that it's kind of trickled down into conversations with others. And I, I recognize that we can't force people not to utilize their vacation homes, but at the same time, we could put out some strong language saying that right now is not a good time to come visit Lake County. All, all of our cases come from people accessing outside of the county, but I feel like we, our messaging is not necessarily strong enough to say shelter in place means please stay in your hometown and your primary residence. We would love for you to come visit Lake County, but please wait for the shelter in place to be lifted, something along those lines. We can't necessarily enforce it, but at least a strong language might let people know, you know, this is important to us, this is important to, to them as well. We would prefer a, a little less traveling. I'm getting a lot of comments from a lot of different constituents from all over the county, actually, that just people are utilizing their vacation homes now rather than waiting during their summertime because it's a nice place to get away from a little centralized hotspot. So just looking to see if that's something possible that we can look at. Again, strong language, not necessarily an order, just like you highly recommend that we wear masks when we're outside, similar situation, wondering if that would be.
So, well, I, I completely agree with you from a public health point of view that people should not be crossing county lines and, and moving back and forth like that. That's where this stuff spreads. And so how, where would you suggest that get disseminated? Just like through a press release?
And I think a press release and maybe putting it on our website. I know that I was pointed to the Truckee website where it just says their appreciation for their visitors, but now is not the time to visit Truckee. And I think that we're in a similar situation, but hearing so many people that are coming here and okay, they're not using the lake, but they're still coming here, which means they're using our grocery stores, they're using our gas pumps and they're next to other people because they have neighbors. And just again, it's not something that we can necessarily control, but it's something that we can at least put some good language to and try and see if we can halt that from happening. And I see Ms. Grant might be trying to chime in on that.
Oh, I was, actually I was getting ready to and then thought maybe not, but yeah, there is language that you can use and some jurisdictions are looking at this, this very thing and looking at ways to try to make it clear to people that now is not the time to come for recreation.
Right. So just moving on real quick, I do want to say, Dr. Pace, we were on the same phone call yesterday in a CSAT conference, teleconference. I do appreciate your advocacy requesting that the rural areas get the same treatment as the urban areas and obtaining the right amount of tests to be able to make sure that as we look at opening back up the economy and trying to go back to some kind of normalized life, that we have the ability to at least test people to know what is truly going on rather than end up having another resurgence that we can't control and then we have to go back to some sort of shelter in place. So I do appreciate you being on that call and you advocating for Lake County. I, I appreciated hearing your voice on there. I know that I have had a few conversations about opening up the lake. I am not in favor of doing that today or trying to push for that, but I am in favor for those discussions. And I think that the working group idea is a really good idea and I think that's where those discussions should be. So I know that Supervisor Simon has already requested to be on that board. Obviously I would be interested as well, but I just think that making that group is the first step and I think that's, that is something that I would love to see happen. And then I, I want to talk to our staff, admin specifically. Unfortunately, the CARES Act that went through the federal government only supported cities and counties of 500,000 and plus population. I would like to see possibly next week if it's possible to maybe find a letter of support for HR 6467, which we just received an email from Mike Thompson's office, which would provide funding from the federal government for cities and counties of less than $500,000. So maybe that's something that we can discuss offline and bring to our board next week. Those were all my things that I wanted to bring up.
Just, sorry, just to, you reminded me that, just a reminder about Congressman Thompson's, Thursday is a, is a virtual town, town hall meeting at 4:30 to 5:30, I believe it is on Thursday. So you remind me of that, thank you.
Supervisor Brown, do you have comments?
Yeah, so I want to go back to the comment about the, or the suggestion of the ad hoc committee, you know, so the, there's a, there's a committee that has been doing this and they're, they're pretty far advanced in the game and Eddie's been participating in that. And I think, you know, given, given the, your interest in being involved in it, Moak, I think if Eddie's at all interested, I think that would be a good idea. He can bring the information that, that we've already been working on for the last three weeks that could be helpful to speed this thing up as opposed to an ad hoc committee that might take quite some time.
So you're referring to the blue collar committee meetings, you and Eddie?
Correct.
Alright.
Yeah, I'd be open to that as well. In, in that way I can bring the information. A lot of good work has been put into it, discussion, debate, all of that. It's well thought out, well respected, a lot of agreeing to disagree. And it's a lot of solutions that we could be using to open up different areas of our, of our Lake County.
Yeah, and you, you know, just I want to preface this discussion too about opening up. This is after the May 3 deadline that has been set up, correct, Dr. Pace? That's, that's what we're looking at here as we go through this.
Right, we're not, we're not looking about tomorrow doing it. We're looking about how to go about, starting to think is how to go about loosening things up in a safe way. And I think the May 3 deadline is a reasonable place to shoot. If, if things continue the way they are now for the next three weeks and depending on where the state and the neighboring counties go, but yeah, that would be a reasonable time to think about potentially taking the first steps. It's not going to mean that the lake is going to be open and everybody can go back out, but it may mean people can go, local people could go in an individual kayak out there or something like that. You know, there's, there's some things we can do, loosen up a little bit and see how it goes and then in two weeks loosen up a little bit more. And that's what, I'm not sure if that's what the blue collar committee has been doing, but that's kind of what the, I think from, from my point of view, and that's the way I think the governor and the, the Bay Area counties are thinking about it, how does, how to phase it in.
Yes, okay. There's, I just wanted to clarify that. Supervisor Brown?
You clarified your opinion. That doesn't necessarily mean that's what all of us think. I, I think if you're going into with the idea that it's, you said it's reasonable to do it after the 3rd, so that implies that it's unreasonable to think of anything at all that could open up prior to that. I, I don't think, I don't think that's a good way to start the ad hoc committee. I think there should be some consideration given, given to some things that, and the, and the blue collar committee has come up with some ideas and Dr. Pace, I've sent those to you, some of them, I don't think they're, they're unreasonable and that's my opinion. We're not having a board vote here and there's not one board member that's going to determine this. I think if you're going to form an ad hoc committee, you should be open to discussion on any aspect of it, including some things that may be able to be open tomorrow. That's what I'm asking.
Well, you know, it did not say I was not open supervisor Brown, I will respond directly to you. What we have in place at this point by the public health officer that has the authority to do this in the county, which we, you know, you know, at this point, all I was doing was clarifying at this point, there's a shelter in place order that is to May 3rd. Just wanted to clarify that. I'm always open to conversations, but ultimately each and every one of us, like we say, you know, life safety and understanding what we're dealing with, which has never been done before, is always needs to be in that consideration, so.
Well, and the, the issues that I've sent him emails to ask him to consider are not, they're not compromising anybody's life for safety. They're just.
No one can make those assertions, no one can make those assertions right. This is the first.
I think I can, no, I think I'm. On how I feel about something.
Well, it's a global pandemic.
I realize that, but our restrictions are greater than the governor's. Even the governor didn't think that if some of these things should, would be required, otherwise he would have required them. So, you know, going based on that, I think there are some things, when without hearing them, you wouldn't, you wouldn't know that. But I think having an ad hoc committee, if you're open to that, to looking at those, I think they should be considered. There's a lot of decisions made by people who, who, like I said, they get paid and the people that were making the decisions on behalf of don't. And I think those people need to be heard as well.
I think everybody needs to be heard, that's part of doing this thing in the right way. Supervisor's about to.
I, I just think that the, the working group, the ad hoc committee, whatever we want to call it, it's perfect timing. I'm looking forward to hearing what Governor Newsom has to say today. My belief, which unfortunately even in our CSAT conference that we had, no information was provided to give us any clues as to what's being told to us today. But my belief is that hopefully there will be a timeline that is offered as far, and it's always adjustable, but hopefully he will provide a timeline so that then we can start utilizing that to figure out what our plan is here in the county. Yes, we do have some extra restrictions that are not restricted from the state governors, but we also need to follow the state governor's restriction as the basic standard until further notice or else we would be breaking the, the law ourselves. But I'm definitely, I think it's a great idea. I think it's perfect timing and I, I think that it would be exciting to be part of any conversation about reopening up and getting people back to work and getting people back to some type of normalcy. I think that we're not going to see the pure normalcy we just left from back in early March. I think we're going to still require six foot distancing and things like that, but hopefully we can start letting more people engage in their typical activities and we'll see what happens. But I think this working group is a great idea and I'm looking forward to whoever's on it for it to move forward and have, and carry on with those discussions.
Just to be clear, there's not been one suggestion made that would be less restrictive than what the governor's had. So just want to make sure that, that you know that.
Yeah. And I will always stress, you know, I, I don't like the let's see what happens attitude because what we're playing with is lives here. So we'll follow the doctor's orders and what the governor's coming down with. coming down with. Those are, I think, the direction we need to always be moving in. So this is something you don't want to say, oh, man, boy, we opened up and, you know, now we have, you know, cases that where we got to restrict again. And that's going to be challenging. I just think, yeah, the discussion is great to have right now. We're hoping we can open as soon as possible, but ultimately the cases as they continue to grow in Lake County will determine what we're doing. So I agree with starting the conversations now. Dr. Pace, I know you've heard the conversation that, you know, I just, I wanted to clarify that May 3 date of what is set in place at this one. Supervisor Crandall, are you, were you reaching? No. Okay. Okay, we'll go ahead and open this up for a public comment. I saw Sheriff Brian Martin early on. I saw him open up his thing. So go ahead and open up the public comment. Can we start with the room at this time?
Yeah, so I can unmute the room and all right, the room is unmuted if you would like to make a comment.
Sheriff Martin, go ahead.
So my, my comment goes back to the, the cloth masking. I don't know that there, the EOC mentioned in there, and I know that probably come down to requests from OES. I don't know that there's a supply of cloth masks. So making an order that people wear cloth coverings is going to be challenging to enforce. I would prefer to see that as a very strong recommendation. And also with some, maybe some suggestions out there, if you make it an order, it's going to be very, have to be very clearly defined on what constitutes a mask. You're going to see all kinds of things that people have across their face. You just let your magic run wild, what people would consider to be a mask. So keeping this as a recommendation and maybe even giving guidance to individual businesses that they have the ability to enforce rules for people coming in their grocery store. If the grocery store wants to say, you don't get to come in my store unless you're covering your face, grocery stores have the right to do that. You can certainly express that. I'm sure that there are always some businesses that jump on that opportunity. And along with that guidance and recommendation, everybody has a T-shirt, a T-shirt at work. So, you know, putting a whole bunch of effort into creating masks is, is something that some people will do, but I don't know that we would want to spend a whole bunch of time and EOC resources while dealing with that type of effort. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Brian Martin. I see Melissa Fulton.
Yes, thank you, Melissa Fulton, Lake County Chamber of Commerce. In my visits to the grocery stores, I've seen several people use plain and simple bandanas as a protection for, for what we're facing. And that seems to work well. It certainly is going to, in the case of a cough or a sneeze, catch the droplet that we're all concerned about. So a lot of people have those. It makes it very easy to comply. Mine is in the car right now. So if I go to the store today, that's what I'll be wearing. It's pink, by the way, so you'll be able to recognize me. But we need to make it easy. But I think that the public now is so in tune, I would certainly hope so, that the majority of people understand the importance of what we are doing and the fact that Lake County is benefiting from the SIP orders. I also agree that there are certain types of businesses going off on another topic that you've been discussing, that we can in fact get to or allow to open while, as long as they're using a format that will protect the businesses, their employees and their customers. There are a lot of ways that we can do this. And our survey is finally ready to go out today that will give us some good information on how individual businesses see themselves as being able to open if in fact they are given permission to do so, both at the local level and the state level. We're asking for an immediate response for that so that that information can be provided prior to the town hall meeting that is tentatively scheduled for Friday of this week. So thank you very much. And thank you for continuing these discussions. It's very important for the survival of our businesses, which equates to the survival of our friends, our neighbors, employees, all of us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Melissa.
Mr. Chair, if there's no more comment from the floor, I do have a couple of comments that were, that were received to the public comment email address.
Yeah, I don't see any more popping up from the floor. So I wouldn't go to the written comment.
Okay, the first comment comes from Joanna McKinley. Joanna says, what are people supposed to do that recently became homeless? I'm having to sleep in my car. Please help.
Yeah.
Do you want me to keep going or pause?
Well, I don't know where to direct that question to as far as word. Supervisor Scott?
Um, you know, they can contact the shelter. I've actually sent a couple of people there to get resources. They may be able to shelter them there or help them in other areas. The phone number for the shelter is 533-0522. I'm not sure if we have that number listed at our, on our website, but that might be a good idea to be able to have that for information for people.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Scott. Supervisor Brown?
Carol, was that, was that email just sent to, it would kind of show that they're actually watching the board meeting or is that an email that came in? Okay, so.
That one came in last, after your last board meeting.
Okay, so, so maybe if we could email that information to her, but if you could also forward her email to me and maybe I can follow up as well.
Okay. They've actually already been in contact. Is that the one I was in contact with?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Scott.
Okay. And then I'll move on to the next one. Mr. Chair, this one comes from Donna Mackewitz. And she says, I'm so appreciative of all Lake County has, of all Lake County has done during the crisis. Closing the lake was hard, but an amazingly insightful action that saved so many lives. My question is not urgent, like many you will receive today. I admit that it is not an essential source, but I'm curious. I am a nest watch coordinator monitoring bird's nest throughout, excuse me, through Cornell Labs as a volunteer citizen scientist. I live in the Clear Lake Oaks Keys with the canal right off my back deck. Is there a timeframe when I will be able to kayak in the canals in my one person kayak? I've never gotten close to any human, rarely see anyone and go out paddling constantly for an hour, no socializing. Mainly, I would like to see, I, I would like to check the nesting double crested cormorants, Great Black and Black Crown Knight here in Rookery at the canal entrance to the big lake. Or would it be possible to get permission to go out once a week in the early morning to check on some nests? Thank you and take care of, take care of all the outstanding community employees and helpers. Sincerely, prayers and hope for everyone's safety. Donna Mackewitz, Clear Lake Oaks.
Think we'll pass it on to Dr. Pace. We had a little bit of discussion about that. So I think that'll be a discussion ongoing, but go ahead, Dr. Pace.
Yeah, I mean, that's one of the things that Supervisor Brown's group has sort of recommended. And, you know, I think it's one of the things that certainly the activity she's describing would not pose a risk. It's mainly just an issue of, of public perception of the lake being closed and how to do enforcement with these things. So this is the discussion we need to have to figure out how to loosen these pieces up without opening the floodgates. But I mean, it's very reasonable what she's asking. That will be one of the first things I think that will probably be on the, you know, on the table to, to relax the restrictions on.
Okay, go ahead, Carol.
Mr. Chair, that completes the comments sent to the public comment email for this agenda item.
Okay, thank you very much. And Jake, we already opened it up from the floor. Have we had anybody else join or anything at this point, Jake?
I know I haven't had any new activity. No one has raised their hand either.
Right. Any more questions at this point for Dr. Gary Pace from the board? Or comments? All right. Seeing that, I would like to finish with Supervisor Crandall, just raise your hand.
Yes, I just wanted to share, I just wanted to share the, I, I had a discussion with Dr. Pace over the weekend. I had a situation, my mother had moved out of a, a facility, a film listening facility. And we were worried because she caught pneumonia over the weekend and she, she tested negative for COVID. So that's a good thing. But Dr. Pace was willing to work with me in case she did, for some reason, test positive out of the blue because, you know, he's very accurate in talking about the senior citizens homes or nursing facilities or anything like that. So I wanted to make sure we got ahead of it. Ended up being a non-issue, but, but those are the type of things that, you know, I'm glad that, that we're, we're conscious of a lot of these different, you know, different things about keeping, keeping us safe and keeping us in, in a situation where we're not making other vulnerable people sick. At the same time, we do hear a lot of other folks that, you know, our county is, you know, sort of Lakeside, I talked to them when working in this situation and they're doing a tremendous job. They don't let anyone in. They don't let anybody, you know, touch or anything like that. They have a lot of good things going there. And so I'm really happy to see that. Just sharing my empirical experience. And so folks know that, you know, we are ahead of this and we've done the right thing. And hoping that soon we can start scaling back. But of course, with a lot of good thought, a lot of good collaborative effort and ensure that we're making sure people are safe. So I just wanted to share that and thank Dr. Pace for his help on that.
All right. Yeah, I would just, you know, like to follow along with Supervisor Sabatier's message out to other communities and other things. Being the holiday weekend just passed, Easter holiday, I forwarded at least one email to you, Dr. Pace, where folks were coming up from the Bay Area, I think, or from different areas. A lot of motorcycle traffic like you'd usually see in the summer, 15 to 12, the 10, groups of 10 coming through South County here. They usually go over St. Lena and down through Butts Canyon. And then they stop here. So a lot of extra traffic on the south end of the county this, this weekend, very concerning. Like I said, also got concerning emails that I forwarded to you, Dr. Pace, about people coming up on vacation homes. So it would be nice if we can put something together, whether it's on our website or other things, that we appreciate you coming when the times are good. But right now, the shelter in place order is very important. And we need to do that. I think it's encouraging to see down in the cities that some of the folks are being asked not to go from town to town. And I think we just need to continue on that, even though we do have a lot of folks that commute over the mountains to Sonoma and Napa and other places. This is something that definitely witnessed this weekend. So we come up with something, very appreciate that down the road, just for messaging. All right, seeing no more questions from the board. So let's, obviously, I know at this point myself, there were three folks that would like to be part of this group. I appreciate Supervisor Brown's suggestion, but I think at this point, the chair and the vice chair, I think are a good selection for that. And I think that that's how we'll move forward, Dr. Pace. So you can reach out to myself and Bruno as we move forward.
Very good. Thank you. So there won't be a vote on that? That's just a, a imperialistic thing that's done?
Well, we can take a vote on it. If you want to take a vote on it, that I'm fine with that. So.
Well, I'd like to hear from Bruno and from, from Eddie. I don't know, I mean, your, your self appointment, I get that. But your appointment of Bruno, when he hasn't weighed in on that as far as taking the place of Eddie, who's offered to do it, I.
Supervisor, if you wanted to take action on it, we need to bring it forward as an extra, I think. Anita, correct me if I'm wrong, which we can do. Anita, am I correct?
It would qualify as, as an extra. You can bring it forward on that basis.
Then I'll discuss it when it comes back as an extra.
Well, we can add it as an extra today, correct?
Yes.
Would like to take care of that right now, so we're not bringing that back later on.
I'd like to make a motion to add an extra item to look at creating an ad hoc committee and who to be appointed to. This has just come up and with the governor's new comments that will be coming on how to reopen the state of California, it is crucial for us to also simultaneously discuss here in the county on what our plan is for reopening our economy and our county. So I would like to make a motion to add that as an extra item.
I'll second that.
For discussion, could I make a suggestion to that motion?
Please.
Based on what Dr. Pace asked for, he said he was forming a work group and, and he's looking at participants. And so what I would suggest your motion be that your board consider appointees to the health officers working group that will address the plan for reopening Lake County following the shelter in place order.
So amended.
Is the second still there?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay. So there's been a motion, a second to add this as an extra item that we can discuss it. So Johanna, go ahead and call for the roll call vote.
Okay, Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes. Okay, then let's go ahead and take this item up at this point. I do see Brian Martin has this, I see a blue hand here for Brian Martin.
I can, I just want to get my hand up for when you take public input.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. So extra item has been added, obviously, to add two members from the board for the working group. At this point, we'll go ahead and put it to the board for discussion and then we'll open it up for public comment at that. Okay, so I obviously would like to be on board as the board chair on this working group as we worked through the process of talking about opening up Lake County. And I know we have two other supervisors that are interested. Supervisor Sabatier, yeah, Supervisor Sabatier said he was interested earlier at this point.
Okay, I thought, I thought you were assuming I was, sorry. Yeah, go ahead. I didn't hear Bruno say he was interested in it, but I did, I wanted to make it clear that I wasn't. I thought maybe you were thinking I was because you mentioned that earlier too. Maybe that was a mistake.
Yeah, I did. No, I didn't say that. What I did is when I mentioned I had interest and then Supervisor Sabatier, I know that point, but they can speak for themselves. Supervisor Sabatier was the second one to say it. And then Supervisor Brown made the suggestion after that, that maybe Eddie would be, EJ Crandall would be, Supervisor Crandall would be interested in it. So all I was doing was following the progression earlier that we, you know, that I had heard. So Supervisor Sabatier?
So again, I, I don't have to be on the committee. I'm absolutely interested to be on the committee. I think it makes sense if Eddie wants to be on the committee for him to combine the efforts that are being made on the blue collar committee to be brought to this work group. But I would also suggest that this work group often come and discuss with the board of supervisors what it's looking to get done. That way we can have a, we can have those private conversations at the work group, but then bring what's been looked at and decided on what, what's the plan look like. Because I think it's useful to let the public know what's being discussed and let the board weigh in on what is happening. I just think that that would be a, a good thing to do. I understand the need for the private conversations. So you can spitball and throw out ideas and some of those ideas may never come to fruition. But as things get kind of put in writing, that it comes back to the board so we can get an update of what's going on similarly to what Dr. Pace does to us on a weekly basis to let us know what's happening.
Ultimately, I would think, yeah, absolutely. Dr. Pace would be reporting on a weekly basis as the plan rolls out. Completely agree with you on that, Bruno. Eddie, EJ, go ahead. Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, I, I, I'm of course interested. That way I could bring the efforts of blue collar committee to, to this, to this working group. But either way, I mean, if Bruno does, I could pass it along to him. Either way, I mean, I'm, I'm willing to do whatever I can, but I want to make sure that, that their efforts are brought forward to help with that. There's a lot of good ideas in there.
Okay. Supervisor Scott or Supervisor Brown, if you want to weigh on this before we open it up? Go ahead.
I'm good, I'm good either way. Whoever wants to sit on the committee. I'm good either way, whoever wants to um sit on the committee.
I don't, I mean, no disrespect to Bruno whatsoever, and I I think bringing the perspective, I know how much work has gone into this already. And I think it's going to save everyone a lot of time and take the bureaucracy out of it by having people who have already been participating in this for three weeks now. Um have their voice heard, and I think Eddie has been actively and uh appreciatively involved in that, and I think that would be. It'd be nice to have him bring that and give you guys a head start.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I feel so disrespected. No, I was gonna suggest the same thing. I think I think that does. I think that Supervisor Crandall is a perfect fit for this. Um he's already been working on the aspect of business. Uh there's other aspects to discuss, but I think why start from scratch when we have somebody who's already uh got some work done? And so I was gonna make the same suggestion.
Okay. Alright, it sounds like uh we kind of have a consensus here. That'll be uh EJ, who's gonna be uh on the work uh the working group. And um I know we have some questions, so we'll go and open this up to public comment. And um actually, let's open it up to the room first, Jake, and I see we have Brian Martin, and then I'll go to you, Melissa, so Brian, go ahead.
Good morning, thank you. So uh this work group, I'm not sure what the composition of the work group is. I'd certainly like to uh join in on it. Um having had a little bit of experience with opening up at least areas of the county after evacuations. Uh I think I might have some valuable insight, and some of my staff may as well. Um and and we get to the composition of the group, um I just want to. Put my two cents in, in that I hope this work group isn't uh a a huge in scope work group. I I hope that it's being selected of subject matter experts. That can uh provide some valuable contribution and maybe we limit it to people that we can expect to maintain some confidentiality. Uh we've had some issues with information getting out on social media, and it really is difficult when you're trying to uh kick conversations back and forth when. Um there's people in the group that are uh apparently feeding information out to uh people that aren't in the group. So with that, I would hope that the uh the work group uh remains small in scope, um and there will be time for for public input. Uh when Dr. Pace or whomever it is comes back to uh present their findings, recommendations and and discussion to the board. Um so with that, um I'd like to be a part of it and. That's all I have for now.
Alright, uh Dr. Pace, um. The uh the makeup of the group, obviously, you heard the request from the sheriff, who definitely, I think, brings some stuff to the table, but um. You know, I don't know exactly what you're thinking on the uh the makeup of this group.
Well, I guess the what what I had thought of was uh health department. Some some representation of the board of supervisors, which is what we're talking about now, sheriff, schools. And uh so, well, and then I wasn't sure after that. That was probably I was thinking, but. You you know, if there's an obvious suggestion of somebody else that would should be part of it, that would make sense, but that seemed like a. A good working group and potentially the cities, I guess, too, but I it would seem like to work with the county right now and to do that. And then to have discussions outside of it was kind of the way I was thinking about it.
Okay, alright, thank you very much. Uh Rob, I do see, I had Melissa up here first, and I'll go to you. But go ahead, uh Melissa.
Alright, thank you. Um. I'm glad to see that they, there seems to be a consensus to keep um Eddie on this group. Uh he has been extremely valuable uh in his input, so hopefully that is uh set in stone now. But again, um I. Several people have been involved in the blue collar. Working group uh representing business, and I urge you. Uh with all due respect, uh Dr. Pace and uh Chairman Simon, to include. At least a couple of representatives from the business community. Uh everything you're doing is impacting not just the business owners. When I say business. In my mind, I'm talking about the employees who are out of work. Um won't be back in work until we can get this this county open. Um we've got to think of them. There are a lot of people now that are suffering in ways that um maybe no one is considering. Or very few people are considering. We know for a fact that we have a lot of employees out there. Who live from paycheck to paycheck. They have no reserves, none whatsoever, and um they're. They could be getting extremely desperate. You just heard about the woman who's now living in her car. Um we need business involved in this ad hoc committee and business needs to be heard so that we get those people. Out of their homes and back in their jobs, so um you've got people on the blue collar committee. Who obviously represent business, and I would urge that you consider some of them in this new ad hoc committee. It um with all due respect, it seems like we may be duplicating efforts here, but um be that as it may. Thank you.
Yeah, I I would just like to respond uh with, as you say, all due respect, Melissa, um understanding uh. The folks that are out of work, that's all I think about every night, you know, I don't know. Um as you go through this, laid off over two hundred and sixty employees that have worked under our organization for twenty-five years. So I think about each and every one of those families and individuals every night. Opening up this county is something that we'd love to have happen tomorrow, but we know the health stuff that we're dealing with is very important, so. I just want to be respectful the same way you said it, but it's all what I think about. Um as the supervisor of of the county and also large business owner, multiple business owner in this county, know what our folks are going through. And it is something that makes it make it easy to sleep at night, so understanding that um does always the focus. Um you know, I just, I think adding EJ to the board who's to this committee uh to represent the um blue collar committee, I think is great. Work's been done, but um. You know, I I just, I want to make sure. I know a couple of times it's been said, well, don't understand what people are going. I I absolutely understand. Uh and I take it to heart uh of what people are going through. Um working diligently to try and figure out ways to make people's lives better, or at least make sure that they have the path that they know they can go on. And that is a daily basis, twenty-four hours a day of a concern, so I just want to make it very clear to you and the rest of the public that. I um you know, and that was used of you or I, uh this is something that's being done as a to um respond to the pandemic that's out there. That's threatening people's lives. People are dying. I think there's almost thirty thousand people who've died here. Or twenty-two thousand people have died in the in the United States and, you know, obviously want to open up as soon as possible, so. Just want to make that very clear moving forward, that uh ultimately, I would love to have all businesses back open tomorrow. But that just is something we're gonna have to work through this pandemic.
Uh Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, if if I could, just to remind everyone, your board is picking two members to be part of Dr. Pace's committee. You're not creating a committee. If you want to create a committee, you can certainly do that.
Well, apologize if you used the wrong word, the working group.
Well, whatever you're creating, your board isn't creating it. It's it's Dr. Pace's committee. He's asked to have board member representation on the committee he wants to put together. If that's the case. Then that's really all your action. If your board wants to create a board authorized committee, you can certainly do that, but that's a different animal.
Thank you for the clarification, Anita. Supervisor Brown?
Yeah, that just uh I just sent uh Anita a text to confirm that. I was asking that same thing. What you're, what we've been talking about is a uh committee that would be subject to public meeting. And the Brown Act, if it were the board a board appointed committee, and um. And I was going to suggest to Melissa that if that is the case, which I'm okay with that, because that would give everyone an opportunity to be involved in the meetings. Um they don't have to necessarily be have a seat on the committee, but they would actually have a voice there, so maybe uh maybe that's not a bad idea.
Well, I still think that he asked for a working group, and that's uh I think that's what we're sticking with, so.
That's what you're sticking with. I'm I'm suggesting we have the conversation. So, yeah, I guess I'm done.
So uh I I would like to offer a suggestion um for Dr. Pace's work group. Obviously, we're not gonna um. Vote on this, but I would suggest, yes, obviously, business should be uh represented. Uh I don't know if it necessarily needs multiple people for business, because Eddie seems to have the representation of multiple businesses already coming from the blue collar group. So that can be combined into one. I'd like to see maybe somebody from the faith um groups. Uh church is important for many people, and there's issues with uh congregating in a building with a large amount of people. And maybe having somebody from the faith-based organizations to try to figure out how that might look if we reopen to do that in a safe way. Uh obviously, schools, uh somebody that represents the lake. I don't know if that would be Director De Leon or somebody who is uh. Uh well-known in the community for uh maybe providing tour guides or whatever it is that to again, how do we reopen up our lake in a safe way? And then law enforcement. Uh I think that that would be um between supervisors, public health, business, faith, schools, lake and sheriff. I think that helps us tackle uh a large amount of uh how to keep us safe when we look at the chance of reopening up. Just a suggestion.
Again, I I I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, again, because it's a different animal with different legal requirements if your board is creating it. If your board populates it, that's pretty much the same as as creating it.
Ms. Ms. Grant, I'm just offering a suggestion to Dr. Pace. I am not asking that the board votes on that.
Supervisor Scott? Hold on, go ahead, Anita, finish your thought.
Uh the only thing I was going to say is, again, your board is more than able to create your own committee if if that's what you're going to do. Dr. Pace apparently had some idea of what he was trying to do, making certain suggestions is fine, but your board does have to be careful not to go beyond that. Because now you're 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 actually populating the committee, and you don't want Dr. Pace to think. That he is obligated to follow any of your suggestions, because he certainly isn't.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, Anita. Tina, go ahead.
Um I would just like to chime in that I don't think this should be a a board appointed um committee. I think we have to remember the comments that were made by our sheriff. Um you know, about um issues that he's having with um comments coming out of, I'm not sure what committee it is it's coming out of, that he's having to um. Come back and 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 work with that, so I think it'd be best to keep this um as Dr. Pace's committee.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with that. Okay, I think we've gone through the room. Carol, is there any um email comment at this point?
No email comment on this subject.
Okay, alright, so uh at this point, I think we have a consensus. It's myself and uh EJ will be working with Dr. Pace on his working group or committee. And uh thank you very much uh for offering that up, Dr. Pace.
Thank you very much.
Right, if there are no more questions for Dr. Pace from the board, we'll go ahead and move on to our next item on the agenda. Thank you, everyone. Okay, moving on. Go ahead. What?
Uh this is, but when would be when would be the meeting or uh gathering or calling in or whatever?
We'll be in touch. We'll be in touch. It'll probably be before the end of the week. Thank you, Dr. Pace. Okay, moving on uh our agenda here. I was item six point three, we're moving on to item six point four. Uh before we start item six point four, I would like to uh let the board know that I think it would be pertinent for us to take a lunch break. Uh probably starting at about um. Five, eleven fifty-five, and you know, uh we want to make sure we can catch um Governor Newsom's announcement that he's gonna do at noon. I think that would be pertinent to uh as we move forward here, the working group and everything to catch that, so let's just say we'll take the uh. We'll just start at twelve o'clock and come back at twelve forty-five for a lunch break. Okay? Alright. So moving right along to item six point four, our six point four item, uh nine thirty AM item, public guide, public hearing. This item will be continued to May nineteenth, twenty twenty, continued from March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty. Appeal to the Board of Supervisors, AB nineteen zero three, for minor use permit eighteen dash zero ten to Santner and Frey. Can uh Anita, do do we need to do this by motion or uh? Continue, go ahead, Supervisor Sabatier.
I I want to give Anita the chance to respond in case. Okay, um I just wanted to um. I guess ask, what what is the reason for continuing this to May nineteenth? The original planning commission was May twenty-third, twenty nineteen. This is a business that is also part of the essential workforce. And being able to conduct business, uh this is a whole year of waiting uh for the appeal process to go through. Uh I'm not against it going to May nineteenth. I'm just asking why um is it through technological issues that we're not able to do the appeal? Has the appellant asked to move it forward? I just hate seeing us up. Uh back up somebody who by May nineteenth might be able to lose out on their season of, they've already lost one season. Uh who may lose out on another season of potential um income for their business.
This is something that has been on the agenda, obviously, for this hearing. Uh you know, at this point, uh was a request that uh we we move this thing out to a later date. I know. Uh I had a request, uh my had requested Scott did on if you could reach out to the appelle and see if we could do that, if they were able to do it, so. Um that's where we're at, Bruno. Uh Super uh Department Head Scott De Leon, I don't know if you want to add anything, but I know this was a request from. Go ahead.
Yeah, we um it's a combination of all the things that you just mentioned, um the the technology of trying to introduce. All of these exhibits, um you've got uh legal counsel for uh the appellant. Uh you have um staff who's sheltered in place and um and is, you know, having difficulty. Uh developing the technology at his residence in order to be able to to provide testimony. Um so it's it's been a combination of a number of things and um. Uh. We'll uh we'll make every attempt to not have any additional. Uh ex uh continuations of the item and and try to get this done in May.
Okay, thank you for the explanation.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you for taking care of this. Thank you. Supervisor Crandall, do you have a question? Just typing, okay.
Mr. Chair, um our county council got dropped off the call. If we can just take a five-minute break or so to enable her to reconnect?
Okay, yeah, let's take a five-minute break. I will just uh let you know on item seven point two, uh I am a tribal leader for the Milltown Ranch area. One of the local tribes, so I am going to recuse myself uh from this discussion. And so what I'm going to do then, because it'll be very interesting to do this, I am going to leave the meeting and then uh Jake, I will come back, so.
Do you want me to text you when we're done? I.
If you would.
I'm sorry, I actually, I I have something for this.
Can I do that or no?
Um I have a breakout room that I could put you in that I think will remove you from the discussion. And when we're ready to have you back in, I could just pull you back in.
Uh that would be great.
Nice. So let's see how this works.
Supervisor, um Crandall has his hand up.
Yes.
Yeah, I I have to do the same thing as well. I'm confident that the board will take action. I'm also the tribal chair of Long Island Ranch area. Um so I um I I wrote a letter on behalf of the tribe to the government, and so it would not make me, I I don't want to double do it, so I'll go ahead and do the same as. Supervisor Simon.
Yeah, and I've already, we've already written our letters and consulted with uh the treasury and everything, so yeah, I'm recusing myself from this item.
Okay, so are are you two ready to move out then?
Yes.
Okay, let's see if this works. Bear with me one second, please. Okay, so they have moved into the breakout room.
And Chair Sabatier, you need to take over on this item.
Okay, alright, uh so. Item seven point two, consideration of letter to SBA in support of the needs. So item 7.2, consideration of letter to SBA in support of the needs of local tribes due to the COVID-19 crisis. Supervisor Brown, this is your item that you brought to the board, so I'll open the floor for you.
Thank you. So this came as a result of a conversation that I had with Supervisor Crandall regarding their efforts. And I was actually surprised when I found this out and he he explained the perception of a conflict, which that's that's their right, their obligation to determine whether or not it's a conflict for them. But I do want to tell the public, let the public know that there is no financial conflict for either Supervisor Crandall or Supervisor Simon in so much as their, not one dime of this could actually go to them personally. This is basically in the paycheck protection plan that the government has implemented for any business, any non tribal business that can take advantage of this. And basically what it does, it offers a paycheck. It's a forgivable loan as long as the money is used for to to continue to pay the employees that would otherwise be out of a job as a result of COVID. My thought on this is that we have close to 1,000 employees that are that are part of the tribal businesses that are owned. And they aren't, it's not a tribal thing. It's they employ people throughout our entire county, people that are now without a without a job. And they provide for their families. They do all of these things that we, the rest of us do in business that have employees that the employees shop here, they spend their money here locally. And this money is money that we rely on throughout the county. And I don't mean the county government, I'm talking about the county as a whole through our businesses and our local economy. I don't think it's, I don't think it's fair that one group would be denied this just because they're tribal. And and other groups would be allowed to have this because they are not tribal. Just think there's an equity there. And I'm asking that we write a letter in support of their efforts to be included in the paycheck protection plan that again is a loan, but it's forgivable as long as the employees are remain unemployed during this. The same as we're doing for our county employees.
Okay, thank you very, thank you very much for that. You have more?
No, that's it.
Okay, any comment from Supervisor Scott?
Sure, you know, I respect Supervisor Simon and Supervisor Crandall for removing themselves from this discussion. I agree that this is, this letter needs to be sent, supporting our community. There is a very large set of our community that would benefit from this monies. My only question is, the wording in our letter, is it the same as a letter that they're saying that they sent to tribal? So we're kind of sending the same message? Did we, did we get the same wordings from?
That's where we got the the wording from, from the letter. Carol can can speak to that, but it is the same message, so.
And I modified it just very slightly to make it appropriate for your board. And then in anticipation that the two supervisors that had recused themselves might do so. We also have a version of which has just the three of you signing prepared.
Okay, I appreciate the question. I know what you're looking at is are we standing in solidarity or are we asking for something slightly different? And I think it's good that we make sure that we're on the same page. I did ask during our CSAT conference, teleconference that I was on yesterday, because they did bring up that there are some funds available for tribes, but it's for very specific situations and not doesn't cover the PPP, the Payment Protection Program, things like that, our Paycheck Protection Program, things like that. There was some good information provided, such as if they work with a community bank or things like that, that that might allow them to slip through and get access. Those are all bits of information that we need to provide so that if something again in the future comes up or if this lasts longer than than is needed, then we can maybe help them out with getting there. I think it's important, as you said, about 1,000 employees. It's a huge part of our community, it's a huge draw for our community. It's it's a part of our hospitality that we offer here in Lake County and and I think that everyone in Lake County should be supported. So I appreciate the letter being brought to the board. And I will now open it up for public comment. Jake, is that, can you open up the room for public comment?
Yes, yes, I can, one second. Okay, so the floor is unmuted. I actually didn't see anybody's mics toggle to on, so there might not be much interest. But if you have a moment to speak, do so.
Okay, no one rushing to the microphones to speak. I'm going to take that.
And Mr. Vice Chair, I do not have any public input via email on this item either.
All right, that was going to be my next question, thank you for that. And so I'll bring him back to the board for action.
So you, just to clarify, you're, you did mention other funds that are available through the CARES Act. And that is true, that's for tribes specifically, this this is actually specifically for employees and and not, you know, to the casinos, not to the tribes reading. It's basically just to guarantee or at least help to promote the idea of employees knowing that they still have a job at the end of this. If we don't, if we don't honor this, they they could easily go on somewhere else or be like the the poor lady who's now wondering where she can park her car because she doesn't have a home any longer. And that's a real thing, it's a real thing that we're going to be seeing right now. So I think, you know, this this act by itself may not turn the page, but I think maybe we'd get other municipalities to participate in this and support our employees, whether they be working for non tribal businesses or tribal businesses, really makes no difference to me. So if there's nothing else, then I'd make a motion to support the letter to SBA in support of the needs of local tribes due to the COVID-19 crisis.
Second.
Now the motion and a second, Johanna, can you have a roll call, please?
Yes, Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
And Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
And Supervisor Brown.
Yes.
All right, motion passes, thank you very much. Jake, if we can bring back the other two supervisors.
I will pull them back into the room.
And thank you for looking ahead and and having a solution for this.
Hey, that was pretty neat. Okay, I'm going to join their room real quick, I'm going to give them a notice.
Now I have to watch what I say or you might send me to the room. And then Jake, when you're done bringing everybody back in, if you can mute everyone, because I see sometimes people are popping up with some background noise, just to make sure that they're all muted.
Yeah, that was, that was me before. But yeah, I'll make sure that people stay muted.
Thank you.
And myself.
I think we're back.
No, we're missing Eddie still.
Think it had a countdown with a minute or push to leave now. Maybe he's waiting for the countdown.
In that case, we have 30 seconds here.
We've lost Eddie in the shuffle. There he is.
There he is. All right, okay, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and continue on with our posted agenda here. Item 7.3, Lake County, consideration of proposed findings of fact decision in the appeal of Lake County Local, AB 1907. Anita?
Anita, come off mute. Jake, is she able to come off mute?
I'm helping her right here. Anita, can you?
There you go. Hello, Anita.
Hello, okay, maybe I just wasn't close enough. This is the findings of fact and decision in the matter of the appeal of Lake County Local. It was your board's decision unanimously to deny the appeal of Lake County Local. The applicant here is the Lake County Valley Oaks Development. If your board has any questions or changes, I'm happy to to make any changes. If if not, the, there will be a motion to to approve the findings of fact and decision and a motion to deny the appeal. Your board can make those in combination if you choose.
Okay, any comment from the board on these items? Supervisor Sabatier?
I I do have one and I think it's implied, but I just wanted to check in with Ms. Grant. One of the issues that they stated was that we didn't send out the letters to neighbors and that we had evidence that it was sent out even further out than the normal standard 600 feet. I think it was 625 or 650 feet. And I don't see that in there, but it kind of says that there was not enough evidence to support any of its appeals. And so I'm just checking in to make sure it's covered.
Yes, that's a very good question. Not every detail in these basic findings is covered. It was addressed that you adopted the findings or the arguments and analysis of staff in their staff report. And there was insufficient evidence to to justify your action to grant the appeal on the basis of each and every of their argument. So certainly specifics can be included here, it's it's more of a summary approach.
Okay, and and the reason I ask is is I am concerned about a follow up to this. And I just want to make sure that we have everything to fully support the decision that we're making. But I'm I'm going to guess that that's already there and that we are well supported, especially with our video that we have of the conversation.
Yes, your board was very thorough in the course of this hearing. So the facts here are very well supported by your question and answer.
Thank you very much, Ms. Grant.
Any more questions from the board? On this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and open it up to the room, Jake, and then we'll go to what we're commenting after.
Okay, I will move to unmute the floor. All participants are unmuted.
Do we have any public comment from the room at this point? Okay, seeing none. Carol, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not have any public comment via email for this item, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll bring back the board for action and there are two motions that she said need to be done.
Mr. Chair, do you mind if I make the motion for you? Since this is in your district.
No, go, yeah, Bruno, please do, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the findings of fact and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
Hey, Johanna, go ahead.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Brown.
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
And Mr. Chair, I move to deny the appeal.
Second.
Okay, Johanna.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Brown.
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon.
Yes. Okay, that concludes item 7.3, thank you very much, board. And Anita, item 7.4, consideration of an urgency order establishing a temporary exception to certain nuisance abatement notice requirements of Chapter 13 of the Lake County Code.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is at your board's request from last Tuesday. This represents a rough draft of the type of urgency ordinance that your board could adopt to shorten the period of time for notice with regard to nuisance abatement for hazardous vegetation from 30 days to 15. This allows you to take immediate action to do that as you're moving ever rapidly into fire season while still having to deal with all of the problems and challenges of the ongoing pandemic.
Anita, thank you for working hard on bringing this back. Supervisor Brown? Supervisor Sabatier?
I appreciate Anita getting this back to us within the week after the discussion. And I think it has exactly what we discussed and I'm ready to move and take action.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open this item up to no more comment from the board. Go ahead, move it out to any comment from anyone in the room at this point, Jake.
Oh, all right. I have unmuted the floor. I I don't see that it's toggling anybody's mutes here, so everyone might not have active mics. But we could give us a moment, yeah, would like to make a comment?
Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back. Do we have any comment, Carol, on this item?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have one comment via email. It comes to you from Michael Kramer. He says, amending the nuisance abatement notice requirements for mitigation is commendable for the deterrent, deterrence of radiant wildfires. Let me read this better here. While it is commendable for the deterrence of radiant wildfires, it may very well preclude the participation of owners at some distance from Lake County, such as ourselves currently in Sonora, Mexico, who may have to endure 14 days of isolation before proceeding to the county. As the public health officer notes, immigration of potential carriers of the COVID-19 to a rural county such as Lake overwhelm the responsibilities of the county. Your decision on this matter should indicate the importance you prescribe to either radiant fires or spread of the pandemic. Although the opportunity to notify property owners through the annual tax notice has passed for this year, it would still be possible to include a notice of nuisance abatement requirements in next year's tax notice. Not everyone in the county knows about this requirement. And that is all the emailed public comment, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. I know that, do we have Andy? Andy Williams on from Code Enforcement? I don't see him in the room. Supervisor Brown?
Well, just real quick comment, I I know what Mike's talking about, like Kramer, and I, there's always an exception. I mean, if there's a problem for a property owner that can't be here, then you know, I'm sure, you know, we can work with them. That's not, it's, that's understandable, but without, short of that, that's the only thing that we have. So I would move to, I'll go off the ordinance.
Yeah, Supervisor Sabatier.
Excuse me, Chair, this was my error, my memo didn't reflect it. You should nonetheless first make a motion to waive reading of the ordinance title, reading of the ordinance, have it written title only, and then offer the ordinance, my apology.
I'll have, I'll move to have the ordinance read in title, have the, have the reading of the ordinance waived and have it read in title only.
Supervisor Sabatier, go ahead Supervisor, so I do, we'll go right back to, go ahead Supervisor Sabatier.
And just real quick, I just wanted to provide a comment on that public comment we just heard. I think that if we are landlords, property owners, whether we are stuck in a foreign country or whether we are home, we're still responsible for our property. And if that property has the ability to be conducive to allowing fires to continue and rather than offering a safe environment for their community, then they need to take that responsibility no matter where they are. And they can easily organize through the internet or through phone calls, somebody to clean up their yard to meet the standard that we're expecting all properties to meet. Yes, it makes it a little bit difficult, but the responsibility still lies and it's still there. So I I think that, yes, there's some certain circumstances where a phone call to Code Enforcement would maybe help figure out how it is that you can solve that problem. Code Enforcement is definitely willing to work with folks. And I think that the the responsibility does not decrease any because you're not here. We still need people to help protect our communities from fire.
Supervisor Sabatier, so Supervisor Brown before that had offered.
Made a motion.
Yeah, made a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There we go. All right, Johanna, go ahead with the roll call.
Um, am I doing roll call or am I reading it, reading the title?
We have to vote on it first, yeah.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor. Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Brown.
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Okay. Now I read it?
Yes.
Okay. And urgency ordinance establishing a temporary exception to the notice requirements of Chapter 13 of the Lake County Code.
Okay. All right, can we continue, uh?
Now there'd be a motion to offer the ordinance, or just to offer.
Offer the ordinance. I'll offer the ordinance.
Now to roll call.
Okay. Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Brown.
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon.
Yes. Thank you, Johanna.
Thank you, Board.
Uh, the only thing we have left at this point on our posted agenda is Supervisors' weekly calendar traveling reports.
Mr. Chair, if I may, we still have that, we have that other extra item. The, um, approval, consideration of approval for the second town hall for.
Oh, thank you very much. Yep, I missed that. All right, guys. We'll go ahead and address that item at this point. Uh, Supervisor Sabatier?
Uh, so, uh, the reason I bring this up is, uh, I think that number one, I really appreciate, uh, what Supervisor Brown has done. I think that our businesses need all of the information, uh, available to them on how it is that they can protect their businesses from, uh, feeling the full burden of what a shelter-in-place has been doing. Uh, and this is being followed up by a town hall meeting on Friday, and I'll let Supervisor Brown give out details, um, which will help out workers to make sure they're aware of what avenues they can take to, uh, keep their finances flowing, uh, at least to a certain degree. Uh, I think that those are very important parts of dealing with a shelter-in-place. Again, I appreciate the fact that this has been put together already, one town hall and another town hall. However, I do recognize that some staff time has been utilized and that we are also utilizing the, um, website and our Facebook page, and I just want to share, uh, my support in approving to having this meeting and to utilizing staff time, uh, because we are forcing people into a situation that is uncomfortable and uncertain of what the future holds. And I think it is also part of our job to provide as much information and assistance to get these people, uh, in a much more comfortable place as we deal with this. Uh, so I just wanted to bring it up and see if we can, uh, get a vote of approval to make sure that this continues.
Okay, Supervisor Scott? No. No comment? Okay, all right. Any more comment from the board at this point?
Mr. Chair, if I could add a quick comment, um, when I drafted the memo for this item, I noted that, uh, that the date and time, although it's intended for this to happen this week, the date and time, I think, is still being worked on. Um, we're looking at Friday, but I don't know that the time is firm yet, and so I, um, yield to Supervisor Brown to comment on that.
Go ahead. Yeah, I am still working on that, and I'm also working on a separate forum to not use, uh, county staff.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, Supervisor Brown. Yeah, uh, my, my only comment is, obviously, too, I, I think any information getting out there, Supervisor Brown has done a good job of getting the information out to the folks. I know, um, we posted it also on our website. Uh, I think on our Facebook or something early on, too, when some of the stuff came out, but there is plenty of questions and concerns from folks. Uh, you know, especially with the EDD situation, uh, with the state of California, so, uh, appreciate it. So, uh, is there, Supervisor Crandall, do you have a comment?
Oh, well, you know, I, I really enjoy being a part of that town hall. Um, and the reason why is because so many people were able to collectively and actively, um, get their concerns met or even bring up new ones that they, that, that we would find an answer to. So I think it's good to have this continual conversation, and I agree with Supervisor Sabatier in that, uh, I have no problem with, um, you know, moving forward and even posting it on the county's, uh, website and whatnot, because it's, it's just something, this is a new situation that this county's dealing with and the world's dealing with in general. So I think situations like this, you just gotta, you just gotta try to do what you can, so.
Excellent. Thank you, Supervisor Crandall. Supervisor Brown?
So, um, yeah, and I appreciate that, but, you know, and I appreciate Bruno bringing it forward, and, you know, he expressed to me that, uh, largely because there were some people out there that were concerned about the fact that I was the one doing it. So, uh, he was, you know, accommodating that concern. Um, so I began to look at other formats because I didn't want to, uh, impose upon the board or county staff. That wasn't my, I didn't ask for that initially. A lot of staff, uh, there was a lot of staff time put into this. I do appreciate that. They worked hard on it. Um, we had, uh, 14,300 viewers since that meeting, during the meeting, and since then, 3,500 of those were Spanish speakers, so there's definitely a, a need. There's a lot more people, um, that, that are out there, you know, that, that need that. And, and, uh, so, so I am, you know, I, I have this option available if that, if the board supports that, but, you know, they, they, it's unfortunate that there are people out there that, uh, and I, I'm not talking about folks that are on this board. That's not what I'm, what I'm concerned with. I'm concerned about some public members who, who show a concern because of their politics as opposed to what's really needed for our community, and that's really unfortunate.
Thank you, Supervisor Brown. Um, all right, uh, go ahead and open this up for, is there any? I don't think there's going to be, but is there any public comment in the room? Jake?
I will move to unmute the floor.
Second?
Sorry.
I'm sorry. Uh, the floor isn't muted. If you have a comment.
It's an opportunity for public comment at this point, anyone in the room? All right, not hearing any. We'll bring it back to, uh, Carol. Do we have any public comment on this issue, since it was brought up right here?
No, we don't, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we'll bring it back for, uh, action, uh, to the board.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve for the upcoming town hall this Friday. If the date changes, I'd like to, uh, be flexible with the date and the time. Uh, but I'd like to approve the town hall that Supervisor Brown has, uh, is working on that has to deal with the EDD, uh, to provide support for our local workers.
Is there a second? EJ, a second?
Second.
Okay. Supervisor Scott, do you have a comment or just ready for vote?
Just waiting for the vote.
Okay. Okay, Johanna, there's a motion, a second. Go ahead and roll call.
Okay, Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Brown.
Aye.
And Supervisor Simon.
Yes. Okay, uh, moving on to item 7.1, our calendars. I know we're pressing up against the time here to take lunch and catch the governor's announcement. We'll go through it quickly. I think we'll be able to make it. Go ahead, Supervisor Scott, I apologize.
Um, um, tomorrow I have a meeting with the Room Key and Shelter in the morning. Um, and then on Thursday, I have an executive, um, committee with the COC. Um, it's disaster council. Is that something they're gonna do virtually? I haven't received any information at all.
Uh, we're gonna, uh, the disaster council meeting for this month has been canceled. I think, uh, that should have gone out. I know it was a discussion we had early on, but, um, that's a very good question, but I'll make sure to get that out.
Okay. And that's really all I have on my calendar right now. I'm really working on just, um, sheltering our, our homeless population, working on what we could do with them. Um, if anybody needs to reach me, 849-4414. Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Sabatier?
Okay, so again, every morning, uh, listening in to the morning EOC meetings, uh, seeing how, uh, things have, uh, moved forward in the preparation and, uh, any new cases that we may have of COVID-19. Uh, tomorrow, I will be, uh, joining in the EDC meeting as well as the BARK meeting, uh, to, um, see what kind of developments are happening there. Uh, also, we'll be joining in on the project Room Key conversation, just to listen in and stay up to date as to what's happening, especially since the city of Clear Lake has its share of, uh, homeless population, and so knowing what's available out there is, uh, good information to have. Uh, on Thursday, uh, I will be joining the video conferencing for the City of Clear Lake's council meeting. Um, it seems that my calendar is typically very barren, but by the end of the day, I ended up having four or five meetings anyways. Uh, things just keep popping up, uh, left and right. I know that I have been trying to work on, um, similar, uh, aspects as what Supervisor Brown is working on for his meeting. EDD is definitely a difficult task, not only to get hold of, uh, but for people to, uh, know exactly how to, uh, get their paperwork signed. So I'm gonna continue those conversations and provide that information over to Supervisor Brown anytime I have an update. Uh, other than that, um, people know how to get ahold of me.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, uh, so tomorrow, uh, in the morning, I have a, uh, Zoom meeting with the North Shore Business Association at 8:00 AM. Um, also, another thing, something that'll be happening is, uh, the Redwood Empire Food Bank, they usually do a distribution out at the Upper Lake Park. However, they're gonna do it at the Robinson Ranch, where we, uh, casino parking lot this time for more spam areas so that people can get, uh, drive-through food, no contact. That way they can get all that food. So that, we're gonna try that, uh, Wednesday. Uh, of course, Friday, I have the Blue Collar Committee at 10:00, and then, uh, I'm open to any other meeting. Of course, I know we talked about a meeting with Dr. Pace, and then also the, uh, other town hall, the second Blue Collar Town Hall. So I'll be open for, I'll be doing those as well, and, uh, if you want to get ahold of me, 707-533-3385.
Go ahead, Supervisor Brown, sorry about that.
Okay, so, um, same thing, you know, I'm just flexible through the week. I've got the morning EOC meetings, um, meetings all day, every day. It's just, it's, it's non-stop with, uh, folks that are trying to figure out how to get through this, and, uh, so making myself available like the rest of the board out and about, and I'll be here. As long as we have employees required to be here at the courthouse, I'll be here with them every day for, uh, for a period of time, so. And the town hall, we're, uh, working on the schedule for that, and the Blue Collar Committee meeting at 10 o'clock on Friday morning.
Okay, thank you very much, Supervisor Brown. Uh, obviously, after this, we'll have, uh, later on today when it ends, uh, agenda review. Um, I do know that, uh, I think there is a LAFCO meeting tomorrow, right? Uh, Bruno, I think we have a LAFCO meeting tomorrow, the 15th.
Yes, I didn't have my calendar.
Yep, so we have a LAFCO meeting tomorrow morning at, uh, 9:30. Uh, it'll be virtual, obviously. Uh, doing the same thing as the rest of the board of Supervisors, attending the, uh, morning phone calls of DOC. Also, uh, two, I was on the phone calls yesterday, the Region 2, I think, is what we're in. Uh, the 4:00 PM calls that are happening in the afternoon, that's one Bruno referred to, and Dr. Pace was talking, uh, some of the things. So, um, just making sure to get on the pertinent phone calls, get the information. I think that Region 2 phone call is, in the afternoon, is very good. They talked about unemployment, uh, issues. Uh, they are working on staffing up unemployment. They'll hopefully help with those issues as they come in. That was reported yesterday. I think they had over 500 employees for the state that worked over the weekend. Uh, I know that folks, uh, are constantly doing that. Uh, it is a challenge to get in the phone calls, but hopefully that'll get better as things are moving on. I do know that this week also, uh, the $600 will be rolling out, um, as of Sunday. Uh, that was reported yesterday on the phone call, so, uh, there's some good information that comes out on that, uh, phone call. I think that, uh, there are, uh, the town hall Thursday night, uh, Mike Thompson is doing something, or Thursday evening, 4:30, 5:30, be on that call, and then ultimately, uh, waiting to call for Dr. Pace or anything else. Ultimately, uh, we are all getting emails, uh, from folks who are unemployed or other things asking about unemployment. I think that's a great, uh, thing to get out there to the public, but also, uh, just to take those phone calls and answer them for the folks as we go through it. Really, that's my calendar for this week, uh, and, uh, we'll just continue on that way. So being that we're gonna take lunch, I think what I'd like to do is read, uh, I guess, timing, why should I read the closed session items and then we go to lunch? Uh, Carol?
Yes, Mr. Chair, that would be best.
Okay, perfect. So we're gonna go ahead, and if everybody knows, we're gonna take a 45-minute lunch. Uh, we'll catch the governor's, uh, you know, uh, announcement here, and, um, I will read the two agenda items here really quickly. I apologize. We only have two items. And then some technical difficulties, I apologize.
If you read them for you, Mr. Chair, if it would be.
Yeah, if you, if you, yeah, oh, here, I got it. Sorry.
Okay.
Flipped the wrong thing here, I apologize. Okay, we have, uh, two items in the closed session. Uh, 8.1, Conference with Labor Negotiator. Uh, A, Chief Negotiator M. Long, County Negotiators, Carol Hudson and Pam Semick. And B, Employee Organizations, LCDDAA, LCDSA, LCCOA, LCEA, LCSDA, and LCSMA. That's item 8.1. Item 8.2 is a Public Employee Evaluations, Title Public Health Officer. And, uh, with that, we will go ahead and take a lunch break and reconvene closed session at 12:45. Thank you.